Good morning, and welcome to the committee of the whole meeting of the Cape Coral City Council. Today is October 23rd, 2024. This meeting now comes to order. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Yes, Your Honor, before I call the roll, I would like to announce that Councilmember Long will be arriving after roll call, and I will mark him so. Mayor Gunter.
Here.
Councilmembers Carr.
Here.
Costin.
Here.
Hayden.
Here.
Shepherd.
Here.
Steinkie.
Here.
Welsh.
Here.
Seven present and one excused.
Okay, thank you. Four A is citizens' input time. Citizens' input is a maximum of 60 minutes, except for the input of citizens. On matters concerning city government, three minutes per individual. Please remember to state your name. We'll utilize the podium to my left, your right. Anyone wishing to speak, please come forward. Come on up, sir.
I just have a question. I'd like to.
Just make sure, make sure that mic's working. Or talk maybe a little closer to it?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
There you go.
I'd just like to make a comment about the lock project.
Okay, state your name real quick.
Mark Tichner, Southwest Cape.
Yes, sir.
First of all, I support the lock removal, so thank you for that. The question is about the concerns on the amount of closure time of 81 days, possibly three months, without any access to ramps or access to the river for that duration of time. People want to sell boats. They want to maintain their boats, take them to places to get them fixed, take them to the Keys for those premium months that we have coming up where you're planning the closure. So what I'm asking is, is can we have some accommodation to have the lock open for a day or two during that process per month? So people can do their business and enjoy the boating. I think we all need to make sacrifices to get the lock done. We all, we all agree with that. But I think there's some reasonable accommodation that could be, come up with to support that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello, my name is Mildred Murphy, and I live at Banyan Trace, which is adjacent to the golf course, which is in District Four. And I would like to thank the city council and all the people who were involved in purchasing the golf course. And because it, I, I hope that you do keep it green. And I would like to suggest that in the future, that you set up a citizens' committee, of people that live in the area to work with your parks and recreation on the master plan. Because we are the people that live there, and we're going to be very affected by it. And I'm just happy that you have purchased it. And I know that there's a lot of work to do on the golf course, because I see it every day. And I thank you again for all the work and all the work that is to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Lori House. I live at 2723 Archer Parkway East. I'm a member of Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife, as you guys probably know, and Cape Coral Wildlife Trust. Back about eight years ago, when I first moved here, I became heavily involved with the effort to keep the golf course from being developed. And Friends of Wildlife did some wildlife surveys, environmental surveys. So we have some data, of course, it's historical. But we're well aware of the nature of the golf course and what's going on there. First of all, I don't know if, was there anybody on the planning committee here right now? That wrote up the, so I don't know if you're aware, but I have a sheet for you. We have a model repurposing golf course. Nobody has to go crazy. It's the Lemon Bay Conservancy Wildflower Preserve. Eighty acres of golf course. They can tell you from beginning to end how to turn that into a wildlife preserve. Nobody has to recreate the wheel. I have some information on it. I might hand it out to you, or I might send it to you by email. But I think if I hand it to you, it's easy, it's very short. I think it's a little, well, of course, it's much smaller. And my personal view is that a large portion of it should remain as a natural, undisturbed preserve. But I'm realistic, you know? And I know that it should also have a piece of it that's used for recreation. I'm not going to say exactly what, you know, a senior center, tennis court. It's a large property. I mean, you could do so much with it. But it's very interesting. And they got thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars, dollars, from the Florida Waters, Water Management District because of the fact that it filtered the groundwater. And they got thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars from the National Oceanographic Administration. So I think those grant monies are something you can look into, just because of the value of what it provided for the environment and for wildlife. Yeah. And I should have said this first, but I've been praying for this moment for you guys to buy this for so many years. And you know how important the wildlife and most all of you, you know, wildlife and the environment are important too. And I just, when I heard about it, I was crying, to tell you the truth. So thank you for the hard work you put into it. And I'll make sure I give you a copy of what they did. It's in Englewood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
I'm Carl Boe. I've lived here since 1980. I come to ask you to, number one, before you do anything on the golf course, have the fishing game survey it, see what animals are there and keep them there. And, you know, the fox have been there for generations. For example, the rabbits. I haven't seen rabbits seven or eight years at my house, but about three months ago, the rabbits have showed up. Where are they coming from? The golf course. So all those, all the animals radiate out around. And if you destroy the animals on that golf course, it's not going to radiate to my house, which I'm about four block, three or four blocks from the golf course. The American kestrel comes there in the wintertime, and they're beautiful. We should get a survey. Vince McGrath, who belongs to Cape Coral Friends of Wildlife, has over a thousand birds on his list. He, he could survey those animals. The bobcat, the people that live in the apartment thought they saw a bobcat. We want to keep him there. And the lakes, we should keep them for fishing for the kids and for me, too. And raccoons, opossums need to stay there. The eagle needs the 1,100-foot setback. You know, there's two eagles on there. And, and they need their setback, and you have to survey where they are. I believe that there needs to be a senior center, senior center there and a boys and girls club together. They can interact, the generations, it would be great. And you should poll the schools and the people who live there, give them questionnaires. Do they want to see a golf course on there, or they want to see the wildlife on there? Find out what they, they want. They live here, it's theirs, but I know they, they love, for example, they feed the muskies over there. And so, and I talked to somebody in a boys and girls club in Lee County, and they only have one facility there. They'd love to have a boys and, boys, boys and girls club there. Also, you could put indoor pickleball courts and tennis courts there. You know, it's too hot to have it anywhere else. And so I'd like to see a swimming pool, a snack bar, maybe the outdoor tennis clubs revived, running trails, maybe a 5K running trail. All, but the only thing I can say is, let's survey that, see the animals, and don't do anything with them. And just one more point. The J.C. Park, don't destroy any, any tree with a squirrel's nest in it.
Thank you, Carl.
Those people love the squirrels. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak during citizens' input? Seeing none, citizens' input is now closed. Open up for any council discussion. Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank the people that took the time to come out this morning and let us know about your concerns. I have a lot of the same concerns with the golf course and the lock. I'm very excited of the purchase of the lock. It had bladed that community for many years. And the intentions of the city are to, to make it an asset of not just the city, but the surrounding homes. And there will be more discussion in the future on that. Maybe the city manager would want to comment on it or have staff comment on that, as well as the lock. If staff can comment on the lock. We are concerned about it disrupting the use of the boaters. But at the same time, the project has to be completed. It's, it's a tough situation, but I'm sure the city manager is going to do everything he can to expedite everything and make it as easygoing on the citizens as possible. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. Yeah, I would, did a couple of remarks and just a couple other things. As it relates to the lock, we'll be talking about that later in our meeting today. And based on some of the considerations that are included in the permit, we're probably going to find that that shutdown won't happen during the vacationing folks. So I think you're going to find that out. Initially, we were hoping to get it done as quickly as possible, but it, but the actual closure is probably going to, but going to be a little later than we originally had thought. And you're going to find that out during the course of conversation in, in one of our items today. As it relates to a citizens' committee or a work group for the golf course, I can personally tell you that that has been recommended. And so we're encouraging staff to assemble a citizens' work group, advisory group, as it relates to that. And then lastly, the, the thought of having a plug-and-play program to bring a botanical garden or preserve to that, to a portion of, of that acreage that we have, I'm, I'm all about not recreating the wheel. So certainly, let's, you know, get that turned into staff to be considered. And assuming that an advisory group is put together, that's something that they can, you know, consider as they would look at all the different uses that we're in. Certainly, Carl, the ideas that you had and having, you know, those type of facilities available for boys and girls clubs and whatnot, those are all fantastic ideas. And I'm sure there are more great ideas that would come as a part of that, a part of that citizens' work group. So that's, that's it. Thanks.
Yeah, and I'll just comment on a few things, reference to the lock. Actually, I was down at the lock last week with the city manager. We met with the superintendent down there that's doing the project. Like Councilmember Steinkie had mentioned, you know, the community will hear some of the presentation here later in this meeting. But, you know, I think many of us, myself included, was under the understanding that as soon as we got the permit, the work would, would get started immediately. And what we found out is, all the upland work they're doing now as we speak, but any of the dredging and/or any water work, and our permit states that from November 1st to March 31st, we can't do any dredging, we can't do any in-water work because of the manatee, manatees. So that's why April 1st is when the in-water work will, will get started. And then, as we know, two to three months for the downtime. I'm just as concerned that you are. I go through the lock now, and when the lock closes, I won't have access, just like thousands of other residents in the community. So I know we want to get it done as quick as possible, but we may, want to make sure that we do it in a safe manner. I know they're going to have to partition off the area, de-water some of that. So it's just not moving a barrier out of the way and letting the boaters do. It's a lot more complex than that. So my guess, and we'll hear from the city manager later, once that closes, it'll probably be closed. It's unfortunate that's our only access because, you know, to the open waterways, but it is what it is. Sometimes you have to take two steps back before you can take three steps forward. But there's a variety of other things that we may be able to consider. I know I've seen a few comments in the community. Hey, would you let us, you know, put our boats on a trailer or maybe keep it in the driveway during that course of time? That would be a council decision for later. If that's something that we want to entertain, that way at least some boaters have that type of access. The larger boats probably wouldn't benefit from that. But the smaller, you know, 20, 25-foot boats could easily be placed in the driveway. So that'll be a discussion for a later date. But, you know, we're, we're aware of the inconvenience that we're going to put on our residents, and we want to try to minimize that as much as possible. As far as the golf course, I know 2017, when I was running, I made a commitment then that if we had the opportunity, would purchase the old golf course. I think that could be a gem of the city. It could be a central park for me personally. And I know probably beginning next year, we'll start having discussions, not only with the community, having open public forums, may have an advisory board for that particular park to try to figure out exactly what we want to put there. 175 acres, we can put a multitude of things there. We can quadrant off that particular park if need be, and, you know, do some type of specialty in each one of those quadrants. I'm great to see that we were able to purchase it. I can tell you, it almost didn't happen. So fortunately, it did. At first, we got an answer of no. And then about three weeks later, we got a phone call out of the blue, and then it was a yes. So that's how close it was. So I think it'll be a great benefit for the city. I think between council's discussion, the community forums, an advisory board if we have it, at some point, we will decide exactly what we want to put there. But that's going to be a lengthy process to make sure we hopefully get it right the first time. And I think that's all I have. Mr. City Manager, you got any comments?
All was only to say that we're going to present both topics this, this morning.
Okay. All right, with that, we'll move on to item 4B, discussions. B1 is the golf course timeline. I guess Joe's going to do that. Councilmember Steinkie.
Yeah, Mayor, I, I had hoped that we could move boat canopies up. I had spoken with the city manager about the potential to bring boat camp, canopies up in the meeting. I've got, I've got a personal circumstance that may require me to leave, depending upon how long this meeting goes today. And that was the one that I've been working with city council on.
Okay. Council okay with moving that up?
Yep.
All right. Let's, let's start off with that, then. We'll start with item six on the agenda 4B6, the boat canopies.
Thank you for your consideration. Thank you.
Morning, Mr. Mayor. City Council, for the record, Anthony Santora, Senior Planner, Cape Coral City Planning Development Services. I'm here to talk to you today about boat canopies, what we have for finalized language, and give you a little bit of recap on it. So we'll just start with our current regulations. They can be found in our Land Development Code, section 5.4.7. And basically, we currently only permit metal supports and frames. We do have a maximum allowable size of about 720 square foot or 18 by 40. We do only permit one canopy per parcel with a maximum height at 14 feet to the top of the canopy from the seawall or the decking of the adjacent marine improvement, if there is no seawall present. We do require a minimum of 75% open area on each side with a 12-foot setback from the water's edge of the waterfrontage line, unless there is specific written approval from adjacent neighbors that can see that reduced. And we do specify that all boat canopies must be attached to a marine improvement or seawall if over a public waterway. So just to, again, recap a little bit, there was a discussion on the 410C regarding some resiliency modifications that could be made to the boat canopies. We were looking at a multitude of items that staff presented, between changing of materialities, design requirements and specifications, height requirements, things, things of that nature. At that discussion, council felt that it was appropriate to kind of limit the scope of what we were looking at for the revisions to two primary items, one being the allowable height of the canopies, and one being the allowance of additional canopies on residential properties that have more than 80 feet of waterfrontage. So based off of that and working with council, staff had created a few revisions that specifically affected two subsections within that section, and those being subsection .6 and subsection .7, one for the canopy height and one for the canopy allowance. How many there could be on each site. So the revised language we finalized was specified here. So currently, for section 5.4.7.2b.6, you will see the original language in the unhighlighted portion and then our revised language. So basically, we are still requiring that only one canopy can be permitted. However, we are specifying that on single-family residential properties, which have a waterfrontage greater than 80 feet, a second boat canopy is permitted, provided that the maximum combined area of all of the canopies on the property do not exceed nine times the length of the waterfrontage or 100, 1,500 square feet, whichever is less. So we do set a maximum limit on the amount area if the waterfrontage allotment that the property has is over that. So again, you can see we're just allowing one. What, kind of giving you an example based off of the formula determination, if a property has 150 feet of waterfrontage, we multiply that by nine, you get to 1350. That's under the 1,500, so that would be the maximum allowable canopy area that could be split between two canopies, however the property owner so wished it. And then the second section that was revised was 5.4.7.2b.7. So this is the height provision. So currently, you can see the revised language in the highlighted portion. When we are measuring boat canopies now, we will take it 20 feet from the mean-high waterline of the waterway or 16 feet above the grade of the decking of the attached marine improvement. This allows a couple extra feet so that the vessels, if they are on lifts or things like that, could be raised higher to get them out of potential flood waters if a storm did happen to come by. And those are the two provisions. And with that, I will stand by for any questions.
Thank you. Since Councilmember Steinkie was working on this ordinance, I'll give him the floor first.
Well, thank you very much. And so this all resonated from people that during Ian had damage to their boats and to their, to their canopy structures because of the fact that the water, that the, the water came up so high that they couldn't get the boat out of harm's way. And so the, and the, that's the whole idea of the height. Most, and we surveyed other municipalities in the area, and, and all of them measured from the waterline, because that's what you're doing by putting your boat on a lift, is getting it out of the water. And so the 20-foot from the mean-high waterline, that allows a, a level playing field for everyone, and truly a measurement that allows the boat to get out of, out of harm's way. As our seawalls are being replaced, they're all being replaced two feet higher, basically, using a 10-foot panel instead of an 8-foot panel. It's not a true 10, 2-foot increase in height. But with our current measurement right now, being from basically the seawall cap or the, the dock that's there on the seawall, everybody that's getting a new, a new seawall is actually getting the opportunity to get their boat higher out of the water, while those people that have not replaced their seawalls still have their boat down at, at harm's way. So it, it just allows, it just allows both the boat to be safer as well as for those people that have their seawalls still at an 8-foot panel level, it allows them to get them up based on the waterline rather than, you know, where their seawall cap happens to be. And then the, the additional area for a, a canopy is specifically for those people that would live on a corner lot where they've, they've got an, an extreme amount of, of seawall that they could, they could have one lift on the one side of their corner, a lift on the other side of their corner. The, the, I believe you could explain, if necessary, that the size of one canopy still is limited. So it's not that the canopy can be any wider. It's not that the canopy can be any longer than we currently have as maximum sizes. It would just allow an additional one if, in fact, there was enough seawall length to allow that. So that's the, the work that's done. And I appreciate the work that staff did to get this to the point where it is right now. It's just simply accommodating those people that have more waterfront property as well as allowing all the boats to get far enough out of the water to keep them out of harm's way. And I'm happy to answer any questions that I would be asked.
Okay, thank you. I just had a couple questions. Kind of reminded me, when I was listening to Councilmember Steinkie speak, the 10% deviation that is in the current code, that can be applied for, can that still be applied for?
So correct. Any of the marine deviations that we have specified can be still applied for, and they would pertain to this section. So that, that would be allowable if somebody was seeking it.
Okay. Yeah, and I understand how the formula works. Right now, the maximum canopy is 18 by 40, which is a total of 720 square feet. I guess you divided that by 80 at typical lot. So that's where you come up with the nine square foot, basically, per foot of the length of the seawall. As far as the height, utilizing the high-mean waterline, I think, is an excellent idea. Because I can tell you, as Councilmember Steinkie mentioned, now we have a standard of 2 foot higher than what's there if you're replacing more than 50% of the wall. But until that was put into place, maybe 12, 18 months ago, everybody was raising their seawall, not everyone. Some people were raising their seawalls, but some were doing 12 inches, 16 inches, 20 inches, 24. There was no standard that we had. So, you know, if you look down a canal, you can see a multitude of, of levels. So using the high-mean waterline, at least that's a constant given point. So I think that's an excellent ideal. I think we're basically allowing, what, about 2 feet, Councilmember Steinkie?
About, about 2 feet more.
Yep. So we know there is, during Hurricane Ian, we had a lot of boats that were under a canopy that actually, with the storm surge, had risen and damaged the boats. So to me, that's a no-brainer, so I support that. One of the things I'm a little concerned about, if you read how it's written here, basically, if you have an 81-foot lot, you can have two boat canopies. With the current setbacks that are required of 12 feet on each side of the property line, that gives you about 57 feet of working, usable length of the, of the seawall to utilize to put two docks up there. And I know it can be done. One of the things that I was looking at when we were doing this, I know we have a lot of lots that are long corners. I can tell you, my seawall is about 150 foot long, but it's all straight. But there are a lot of lots that have a, a turn. So you could basically put a, put a dock on the side of your house and one behind your house because of the way your seawall is wrapped around. For me personally, I would have liked to see that a minimum of 120 feet. For me personally, I would have liked to seen that a minimum of 120 feet you needed before you could put the second canopy up. The formula I agree with, but if you're 120 feet in length or more, that's a triple lot. I think a lot of this started out as, you know, the big corner lots where you had plenty of room, where you put one on the side, one on the front. To put two docks up in 57-foot of usable space, that's going to be a lot of a barrier, I think. And I'm not necessarily looking, I'm an avid boater. I have a canopy. It protects the boat. But I also have to consider the obstruction for the neighbors on either side as well. So trying to get two canopies and two docks in 81 feet, to me, that's a, could be a little intrusive for the neighbors. 120 feet, I think there's a little more of a latitude. So for me, I would have liked to seen that you needed at least a triple lot, 120 feet, in order to have the opportunity to put the second dock and the second canopy up. Still utilize the formula. That way, if you have 130, 40, 50, 60, whatever it is, use the nine-square-foot per foot, and that's what you can utilize. So that's my only comments with it. Height, I have no problem. For me, I would have liked to seen 120 feet. That's where I'm at. Councilmember Shepherd.
Yeah, that was my same concern. If someone had 81 feet, I think a triple lot or greater would be the best for this. So it's not invasive to the neighbors. Thank you.
Councilmember Stanky.
You can go to the other one first.
Councilmember Carr.
Thanks. I don't disagree with that. I think unfortunately, I think we need to also look at the size of the canal. With larger canal sizes or on a basin, you can go out 30 feet. That can accommodate a decent-sized boat or two boats coming directly straight into the property, therefore, less impact on the setbacks. So I think if we do go below the, or I mean up to the 120 for a typical canal, whatever canal size is appropriate. But I think if you can do a 30-foot marine improvement area off the seawall, I think we could accommodate two docks on an 80-foot lot. So I think if we can cover the language, that would allow folks on larger waterways to put the two in in the center, say, where they have the ability to go out 30 feet. I think that should be allowed. You know, same concept of a wide lot. If you've got a wide canal, you should have better, you know, use of that space. You know, because you can go out 30 feet. I know I can't go out 30 feet on my particular, in my canal, but I know a lot of others can, especially up in the north. Thank you.
And just so you know, we changed that marine improvement size 18 months or two years ago. Actually, you can go out 40 feet, as long as you, the 25% formula still applies. But if you're on a 200-foot canal, you can actually go out.
Then even more relevant, right? So I guess anything, you know, whatever the number would be. I just think that for someone that has an 81-foot lot, say, and they have a large basin or a large canal, then I think they could utilize two canopies in a different way than a standard 80-foot lot on a 90-foot canal. So thanks.
Councilmember Stanky.
Yeah, thank you. Just to bring a little clarity, we're trying to keep this as simple as possible for the most part. And forever, there's been a 12-foot, if you will, easement from the neighbor. So whether it's the left side or the right side, it's always been 12 feet. So whatever happens in between 12 feet from this side and 12 feet from that side, it's affecting that property owner for the most part because they could choose whichever side to go to. So then you end up with, how many feet can you take up inside of that 12 feet on this side and 12 feet on that side? The restriction of 18 feet wide remains. So with the calculation, it's a real simple calculation. So if you had a 90-foot lot, let's just say, and you multiply that by nine, which is what the formula says, and then you divide it by 18, which is the max width that you can have on it, that allows for 45 feet of canopy. But you can't have more than 40 feet unless you apply the 10%, get the 10% if you want. But so you can get 45, that's all you get, it's 45 feet. Now, if you decide to make a 40-foot or apply for an exception and get, you know, 44 feet, or whether you do two 20s, it still takes up the same amount of space. So if one would choose to have, you know, one for their small fishing boat and one for their larger boat, and they can get that all inside of 45 feet of coverage, then that's up to them. It's kind of what they're doing between their two 12-footers on each end. So I think, you know, trying to say, "Well, but this lot you can, but that lot you can." The calculation already eliminates all of that and keeps it really, really simple that says, "How many feet you got? Times nine, divided by 18, you can only have this much because you can't make it any wider than that." So I think we'd be overcomplicating things if we try to say, "Well, it has to be at least a triple lot," or whatever. Just use the math that's created and it takes care of itself. I realize it's everyone's decision, but we tried to keep it as simple as possible. So.
Councilmember Shepherd.
The only other idea I have is if you have 150 feet and you're allowed to have two, if you did a side-by-side, it would actually take up less square footage than having two separate locations if they were side-by-side. If somebody had a big boat and a small boat and they wanted to create a side-by-side if they have the length, I mean, it's just another idea. It would be less square footage doing a side-by-side than two singles. So it's just something else to think about. I'm not trying to complicate it, but if we're going to redo it, we should try to think of every possibility and get it resolved the best way we can. Thank you.
Yeah, I guess for me, 81 feet or 120 feet, that's not really compounding the topic or making it more difficult. It's just a different measurement, you know, for me. So if it stays in the current form of 81 feet and you can have two, then I'll be voting no on it. But if we come up with some type of other solution as a collective council, whether it's a triple lot or some other type of means, I mean, I wasn't a part of the conversation. You know, something else that could have been considered is if you have 120 foot and you want to put two canopies, if you come to the middle of the seawall at 60 feet, you can go a certain direction to the left, a certain direction. That way, it's directly behind your house and it's not all the way to one side or the other of a neighbor. You know, since you're going to be putting two canopies up, at least a majority of it's behind your house. Because now you could do 12 feet off of one neighbor and squish everything over to that one side, that's going to kill their view or the other. So if you keep it in the middle, maybe not. But we could sit here and Monday night quarterback it all, you know, all day long. But, you know, I, you know, for simplicity, for me, if it's at least a triple lot, I don't think it really will impede the neighbors hopefully as much. And like I said, I'm not really concerned with the individual that wants to put it up. I'm more concerned with the neighboring residents. That's where I'm at. Councilmember Carr.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, you know, based on what Councilman Stanky just described, I agree. I think with the 12-foot setback on each, both sides, the calculation will take care of itself with what they can put up there. So I'm in agreement with the 81 feet or greater as it's written, with the reminder that the 12-foot setbacks and the calculations will take care of itself for the impact on neighbors. Thank you.
Councilmember Stanky.
Oh yeah, just one last question as it relates to that. When we think of triple lots, we're thinking of them linear, if you will. How, just how would that play out on a corner lot? Where it's not 100, it's not, it may not be more than 80 on one side, but then it's 80 on the other side.
I think it's the total, the total linear foot of your seawall. That's how you would apply the rule. So if you have 80 over here and 100 over here, that's 200 feet. You meet the, you would meet the 120 requirement. I don't think it's side-by-side. I think it's the overall length of whatever your seawall is. That's how I see it anyway. Waterfrontage, I don't ever see.
So if you had 70 on one side and you had 40 on the other side, you wouldn't qualify?
Exactly, because you would only be at 110.
So even though you had 40 feet on this side, that you could have your wave runner or your small, you know, offshore fishing boat, you couldn't cover that?
Yeah, I would be surprised if we had a lot that size. On those corner lots, they're usually.
Yeah, my hammerhead.
Yeah. So, you know, I would have to do a little more research in that. Where you put in there, if it's a corner lot, you can put one on each side. I mean, I don't know. I'd be surprised if you had a 70 and a 40. Councilmember Welsh.
Yeah, whether it's 81 or 120, I do agree with Councilmember Stanky and Carr that it'll take care of itself with it. But for the sake of compromising getting this through because we've gone through it so many times, I would also be willing to increase the number from 80 to 100 instead of going to the full 120, knowing that there might be some of those odd-sized lots. So whichever way this comes back forward to us, I'd like to really see this pass. So if it means meeting in the middle, I'm willing to do that. But I would like some more information from the city manager, if we even have those type of numbers on lots, I'm sure. He would know more about that, that we can talk about in a one-on-one or if he has that information now.
I don't have that information now, but we can run a GIS analysis of waterfrontage on parcels.
Yeah, just to see what some of those corners and those hammerheads actually are with the frontage. Thank you.
The other thing that I want to mention too, Councilmember Stanky, I know you've been working on this for a while. I think this is at least the second COW meeting. But unfortunately, in two weeks, you know, we have a new council of at least three individuals. So we can sit here and talk about it all day long. Unfortunately, we know we're going to have at least three new individuals that's going to have a different perspective and a different comment on this particular topic. My suggestion, maybe have staff, and I hate to say this again to you, but to bring it back, we've already approved the agenda for next week. So it's going to be a new council that'll be voting on this. So I don't know if we want to bring it back to another, you know, our first committee in a whole with whatever we have for our new council because we can have that discussion today, but unfortunately with the timing, we're going to have anywhere from three to five new council members. So we don't, we don't know, but at least three for sure.
Whatever the will the council is. We've managed through transition, so I mean, it's just a matter of if you want to present to them what you all are comfortable with for them to vote on or if you would rather get their input before you bring something forward, whatever you all would like to do.
Councilmember Stanky, I know what you prefer, but what's your thoughts on that?
I think it's pretty simple. I think it's pretty simple. And if the three new members don't see it that simply, they can vote no.
Okay.
Let's get it done.
All right.
We could do this now for, the concern has been here since Ian. We've been working on it for about eight months. I just don't see it that complicated an issue.
Right.
And if new members don't think that they should get those out of harm's way, they'll be up to them.
Right. Now, what I've heard here today is basically three, four scenarios. The existing ordinance, the way it's written. I've heard 100 feet and I've heard 120 feet. I don't think any of us have really articulated a concern with the height requirement. So why don't we go down the line here? Because I know there's a few council members we hadn't heard from to kind of get a poll of, you know, you've got 81 feet, 100 feet, and 120 and kind of see where we land on that consensus. Councilmember Cosner.
Yeah, 100.
100.
I believe there's plenty of lots that fall between that 81 and 100 that should have the availability of it. So I'm okay with these, just the way that is.
Okay.
The way it is.
I'm at the 120, or I could go to 100, but preferably the 120.
Yeah, same thing, 100 or 120.
I'm at 80 or 100.
Councilmember.
As is.
As presented also.
So we're kind of all over the place still, it sounds like. So I was hoping we'd get a consensus that way and then we could move it forward, but it sounds like.
I think you did.
I've got five for as is.
You had Councilmember Stanky, Shepherd.
Welsh, Hayden, and Stanky.
Carr.
And Carr.
So we got five?
Yes, sir.
All right. How about if we stick that on next week's agenda so we can get it wrapped up?
Awesome.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
All right. Madam City Clerk, if you could add that to the agenda?
No.
All right, let's move on to the next topic of discussion. We have the golf course timeline. Let's start back up under B1.
Morning, Mayor and Council. Joe Patralla, Parks and Recreation Director. Covering today, the old golf course task and timeline. This is preliminary of what we've put forth to you and where we are today. The purpose of the presentation is really to develop a plan moving forward and what needs to be done now versus the master plan of the site for the future uses. We've heard comments today from the public of wanting to get involved and that'll be part of our master plan process while we develop this site. So currently, we are currently an ongoing maintenance task. Currently, we have it as part of the city mowing program, which is scheduled to occur twice a month. We're looking at pond cleanup and treatment to make sure that that water is safe and good for the public in regards to recreational purposes. Invasive tree removal, we're looking at that. We went out there, did an assessment, and we believe there's about 85 to 90% of the trees out there are invasive. So we're currently working on a scope of work for bid with Public Works right now to kind of get that out and see what the timeline for completion of that will be. We went out there, took a look at the cart paths. They're in pretty bad shape in certain areas, some areas are not. So we're going to have to determine the feasibility of use for recreation, clean up the weeds and grass around them and on them, and then repair any of the unsafe areas, which may be removal and create kind of just a regular recreational trail. The parking lot needs cleanup of the vegetation, obviously invasive and other things. The overall condition of the parking lot needs some improvement and then removal of the old signs and everything in that area. So staff will be looking at that. Do a limited site assessment for maintenance of soils, develop a tree plan around the perimeter of the property. Currently working with our arborist on that. We'll kind of work on that plan as we move forward. Managing public access, as like any other city-owned property, there is an expectation to access of the site. So city, we're going to be working on, develop a plan that will provide for the public safety out there, which includes a sidewalk, which we mentioned earlier, any biking paths, any signage to include wayfinding markers. Kind of get out there, you kind of get turned around a little bit if you don't know the area. So something we'll have to take a look at. Provide outreach programming opportunities to help increase visitation on the site and environmental programming opportunities, whether it's bird watching or wildlife watching, whatever it might be. Work with our staff to get programming out there. Look at small enhancements to the facilities, picnic tables, garbage receptacles, portable restrooms if possible, get them out there so people have a place to use, have some restrooms to use. Increase patrols with park ranger programs. So we'll have to work on a path that they can get out there and see what's going on and make sure the property is being used safely and effectively and we don't have any homeless campments out there or anything that might create some issues. And also minimize our low visibility areas on site to provide clear viewing sight lines for public safety, which is what we try to do in all of our parks. Environmental assessment, as we all know, golf courses are known to have some level of contamination due to chemical and pesticide usage. So we need to review existing environmental assessments that were done on the property, work with Florida Department of Environmental Management to identify and address any required remediation efforts, soils and groundwater. Once remediation requirements are determined, a timeline and plan will be developed to complete the needed cleanup. Part of this also is going to be a wildlife assessment. I didn't, I left it out here and I should have kept putting it in there, but also see what type of wildlife's out there and how do we make sure that they're not disrupted as much as possible during this transition. The fun part really comes in when we're doing the master plan development. Initial public feedback will. public feedback will be provided through our Parks and Recreation Master Plan Process, which was approved and ready to get started in November, so we'll definitely have some working groups on that to get our initial, um, feedback on what to do with that site, uh, from a community perspective. As we move forward, we want to do a master plan on the site itself, uh, which would require us to develop a scope of service during the current fiscal year and ask for funding in fiscal year twenty-six, uh, put the project out for bid, and I'm, I'm assuming it'll be about a nine-month project to data, to do data collection and programming, and that would be where we bring in the advisory boards, um, get out there with the public, the neighborhood, uh, probably a lot of the neighbors, uh, above the property, and any of the other community members that want to get involved. Come up with a preliminary master plan for review, and then as we go forward, we'll develop a final master plan. So a lot to be done as we kind of go through the next year or two, um, with this project. Obviously, we've got, uh, we've got to figure out funding and then all the other things as we go, but I'm sure this timeline will change as we continue throughout this year and next year, uh, depending on the will of the council and, um, uh, where we are with what we can get done on the site. So here for any questions, um, or comments.
Councilmember Stanky.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, with, uh, regard to, uh, comments earlier during citizens' input, with the, with the thought that eighty-five to ninety percent of the trees are invasive and obviously if we're going to permit anything to do any work there, those will have to go based on rule, um, and cleaning up the vegetation and whatnot, um, I don't see anything in here that would have, uh, that, that indicates that we would do anything about a wildlife survey and, and certainly protected species, uh, the, the eagles and, and burrowing owls, tortoises, that, all that goes without saying, but, uh, the other ones as well. Uh, it, can we fit something in there as it relates to that so that we, we, we're not, you know, being overly invasive to our, our wildlife as we would make these, these changes?
Yeah, definitely. I, as I mentioned, that's something I should have put in there, and I didn't put it in there, um, to do the wildlife assessment as part of it. So yes, look at that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Any other, uh, questions or comments? Councilmember Carr?
Thank you. Um, just so I have a better understa- I didn't mention, hear you mention the stormwater element. There is a stormwater piece, I believe, associated that we have, you know, in this property moving forward. Is that part of this timeline anywhere, or how do you see that going forward?
Yeah, that's going to be part of our entire master plan process as we go through it. Uh, we already have some ideas from our stormwater crew in Public Works, uh, so they'll be a huge part of our discussion points, yes.
You know, with regard to monitoring, and I know, I mean, is there full vehicle access, like for the park rangers to fully, um, you know, access that site now, or?
We're able to take some, um, um, off-road stuff out there. There is, I think, Mike, you took your truck out there, I think, at one point. So if we develop a path that they can get through, yeah, we can get them access out there. We just need to make sure that they follow, um, a certain path as they go through and not get caught in any wet zones or any of that stuff. Yeah, we can, we can work on that.
I was thinking, just given the size, maybe just for sake of ease, too, may consider some camera surveillance, you know, at least temporarily while we're, you know, still in the process of getting it up and running, uh, for, I know it's being accessed today. It's been, uh, being accessed for years, right? I mean, uh, we all know that. I think, so are you saying that we're going to permit access by the public prior to any redevelopment, or I'm a little bit unclear on that?
No, basically this first year is going to be cleanup and remediation. Uh, until, until we, uh, get all that work done and understand, um, what and how we can do their soil remediation and water remediation, uh, we, we can't allow access to the public to just go on there with, you know, if they're not an employee or a contractor of the city with proper insurance and, and proper un- understanding of the information of the site. Uh, so basically this year is going to be remediation and cleanup. Next year we'll be programming, uh, somewhere in the transition between the end of the cleanup and the programming is when we'll be able to start opening up certain areas for different types of activities. But the initial six to nine months, uh, would not be that.
Okay. I mean, I'm not sure how you're going to deal with that, but I know that, I mean, I'm, I'm sure the Banyan Trace folks could attest, it's being used pretty, you know, on a daily basis to some extent. I mean, every time that I've been over there, there's always someone coming off the property, going onto the property. And I think now that we do own it, we have a higher responsibility to limit access if we feel it's unsafe especially, right? So, um, I just want to maybe, whatever we can do to make sure the public's aware. I don't know that they are today, and I just want to make sure that we get that message out so we don't have any issues.
The, the, the DEP, uh, i- issue of contamination is closed as a closed golf course.
Okay.
So as long as it remains a closed golf course, it's fine. The DEP has no, no further action has been, you know, has been issued. Once we go to start changing that to be a different type of recreation or more active use, that's where we'll need to work with the DEP on what we, the intended use is and what and, and where people can do certain things.
Okay. Um, just from a process standpoint, do we, do you anticipate everything going through the CRA board first, then coming back, or are we going to, is that how the process will move going forward with regard to approvals and so forth?
Can you restate the question?
Well, well, but, well, like, with the, the deck, you know, as we move forward with the, all the projects on the, on the, um, course, is it going to be all done through the CRA, then come to council for approval? Or we initiate stuff here on council, or how do you proceed?
No, the, the CRA helps with a financial contribution, but not the actual management or master planning of it.
Okay. Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Councilmember Hayden.
Yeah, I'm glad you clarified because it does insinuate under managing public access that there is a public expectation to access the site, so it made it sound like that, um, you might be able to access the site sooner rather than later once the invasives were gone. So I'm glad you clarified. It, it could be six to nine months.
The emphasis there is that we know the public has an expectation of wanting to utilize it, uh, so we are, we are well aware of that, but we have to be diligent and we have to be right in how we approach it. And so the initial cleanup and, and activities on there are all going to be done by city staff and contractors.
That's fine. Joe, I'm, I'm surprised to see that many invasives in there. That's a, how many trees are we talking about now?
I couldn't give you a number, but we went out there with our environmental team, and, uh, there, there's quite a few out there. A lot of pockets of trees, so.
Okay.
We can get, we can, yeah, we can kind of get a good ballpark number for you.
Yeah, I, I'd just be curious, but you may be look at most golf courses, they have four or five hundred trees on them, so.
There's a lot.
This, this one may not be any different. Um, the old sign, how, how big is that old sign?
Well, I couldn't tell you. It's probably.
Like a four by eight?
Yeah, and it's probably about fifteen feet up.
I don't know what kind of shape it's in, but the History Museum might be interested in it because their main building at the History Museum is the old pro shop that used to be at the golf course, so, um, you know, might be a possibility if it can be, uh,
Must be salvaged or something.
Fix it all, you know, I don't know. It might be just worth asking them if, if they want. Thanks, Mayor.
I guess there any, uh, since you brought it up, uh, I think one of the things, uh, until it is open, open to the public, um, you know, I pulled up on Google Earth, uh, I mean, you can pull right in, you got the parking lot, uh, that's there. If you pull straight ahead, actually, there's a big grassy area, uh, probably people were using for parking because it's, you can tell that the, uh, grass has been disturbed. Is that something that you plan on partitioning off? You know, because one of the things, I'm, I'm sure most of the people that you find there at the park are probably neighbors that live around, and they're probably walking out their backyard and going for a walk. That's going to be a little difficult, uh, on a hundred and seventy-five acres to maintain. I think we need to put some signs up, uh, on the parcel, no trespassing signs. Uh, also, I think you need to limit the access so that the public can't drive there and park on the parking lot and get out and walk. If you don't want them there, you, you got to restrict the access or either, you know, because you got the front door.
Yeah, currently, uh, there, there's only a chain that separates the golf course to go back and off a palm tree, you can't access the old parking lot, yeah.
Yeah, so there are just some of the things that, you know, is for security reasons, you know, last thing we don't want to happen since we own it now, somebody get back there and get hurt. Uh, so we want to make sure that we're diligent on making sure we restrict whatever the access, put some signs up, um, get that message out, hey, we know we want to get it open, you know, just as quick as you do, uh, but we have some steps that we need to take first to make sure it's safe. And, uh, you know, get, get that message out to the community. And then hopefully, you know, we can get it to a point, once we get the invasives out there, open up some walking trails until we decide and we're going through the process of having public forums and if we're going to have an advisory board, you know, that's going to take a length of time, but if we can get it open, um, you know, prior to making any definitive decisions, uh, you know, I'm sure we will, once it's safe. Councilmember Carr?
Thank you. Just two more things I forgot to ask about. Um, I believe I'm clear that the, we're taking over the grass maintenance as we, and it's going to be much better than it used to be. It's going to be twice a month, just in our, like our standard, I think I read that somewhere, twice a month?
Yeah, we.
Okay.
We plan a place.
And it be an entire course cut? I mean, is it going to be, I, I think most of the people that live adjacent are familiar with kind of the process now. It's going to be better than what we, was being done prior.
Oh, yeah, there, there won't, there should not be any more four to five-foot high weeds. Um, it's going to be regularly maintained, and then once we get in there and remove the pepper trees, the lead trees, the, all, I mean, that's the problem with invasives. I mean, it, they out-compete anything native that, you know, and, and natural. And so once we start to remove all those, then you'll have even more available, you know, square footage, uh, for use.
The only other thing was, is that parking lot that's across the street, that's kind of in that circle area there on, um, uh, southeast Fortieth Street, you know, that outside parking area, that's currently used by a lot of semis and so forth. It's been an ongoing issue over the years. It has been posted by the prior owner for towing and so forth. Are we going to take on ownership of that enforcement to make sure that people aren't utilizing it for overnight parking for, you know, vehicles that shouldn't be there?
Yes, and, and just for, uh, reminder and for the public's reminder, that parking lot is intended to go away and become a, a public square, uh, lined with trees, uh, a fountain, you know, a place that would kind of bookmark the entrance of that site, and then the future two roundabouts, that country club and palm tree.
Okay. Thank you. That, thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. Um, and ju- going back to the, to the, um, the trees and the, and the vegetation, uh, that's been there a long time, so I wouldn't think that, like, removing it tomorrow would be, um, an urgent need as we think about planning and whatnot in the future. So as it relates to wildlife, uh, we certainly understand the fledging season for burrowing owls, and we've got, you know, certainly legislation that allows for them to do what they need to do and that we don't disturb them. With regard to all the other wildlife that's been spoken about, the foxes, the bobcat, the other, the, the other, you know, feathered friends in the trees, there's probably a better time than not to remove that, that they would be less inclined to lose generations. They would be less inclined, they'd be more inclined to, um, repurpose in a new tree that we would put up in the area or, uh, ground cover that we would, that we would have. So as we would have that survey done, I think, understanding the, the, the wherewithal of each one of those species that, that we're dealing with and concerned with, to, to play that into when do we do things, not necessarily just, you, we want to do this because this is when we're going to put up this pavilion or do this parking lot or whatever, but also when would be the best time to pull that out so that we, we, we are as little invasive to the wildlife so that they can move themselves during a time that's better for them to move themselves, uh, as we decide when to pull that stuff out of there.
Yeah, definitely. We have some well-qualified staff, both in Parks and Recreation and in Public Works and our environmental and wildlife, so we'll work with them to set up those timelines, so.
All right, cool. Thank you.
Okay, seeing no other discussion, uh, let's move on to item, uh, four B two, financial management policies. Uh, I believe that's going to probably be Mr. Mason.
It is.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Mark Mason, Financial Services Director, uh, no, I'm not, sorry, interim Assistant City Manager. Lot of years saying that word.
Yeah. But it looks like you're still doing the same work out.
Uh, a little bit. I wrote these, so I figured it'd probably be best if I got up here and actually spoke about them. So the, um, in this particular circumstance, the, that doesn't work. So as a reminder to the council, uh, as you'll recall, uh, financial management policies are designed and they, and, and used for ensuring financial sustainability to the community. It also helps us to institutionalize good financial management practices. It also helps to clarify and crystallize what our intent is regarding ma- financial management. Uh, it promotes good long-term, uh, and strategic thinking, and it also complies with, uh, in it, with established public management best practices. So if you'll recall, a couple of years ago, we brought these financial policies back to you. Uh, there were some very large changes wholesale. We restructured them, renumbered them, put them in, uh, in, into the format that you currently see them in, and advised that we would look at them annually. And so, uh, we did look at them at the end of, uh, last fiscal year. Uh, we had just, uh, we were in the process of recovering from a hurricane, uh, Hurricane Ian, and, uh, we made no changes at that time. We wanted to get a better understanding of the reimbursement process from Hurricane Ian and, as well as, uh, a couple of id- other items, uh, with regard to some of the changes that we're making here. And, uh, bring, then bring back, uh, some of those changes because we also, uh, took some of these funds that we set aside for reserves and applied them towards the, uh, projects associated with the GO bonds. And so there, there's a necessity for us to make some changes now, uh, and I'll walk through them with you. The very first one is policy number twenty. Uh, originally, when I put this in here, we had an intent to fold the policies annually as an exhibit to the annual budget ordinance, uh, but at the same time, I'm not sure that that's absolutely necessary since we do adopt them as by, uh, resolution. So by doing it by resolution and then coming back periodically and making those adjustments by resolution, as opposed to trying to force them through on the budget, annual budget ordinance, uh, it made sense for us to simply just rem- remove that as a, as an item, because I put it in there, and, uh, just continue to do this process via the, uh, resolution. In addition, on policy twenty-two, uh, we applied, uh, both the Hurricane Irma and the COVID reserves that were set aside for the specific purpose of spec- of, uh, supporting, uh, the GO bonds if it was necessary for us to utilize those funds for finishing the building of these projects. Uh, it became necessary for us to do that. Uh, the city council approved that particular process. Uh, they, these two items were included in a budget amendment, uh, and the, you'll have another budget amendment coming up that, uh, will actually talk about, uh, the remaining resources that we're also transferring. In this circumstance, since these funds are no longer there, there's no longer, uh, a need for us to keep them as a posted, uh, policy in our financial policies, so we're removing them. I do want to go back, uh, I think about six months ago, we had talked, when we originally approved utilizing these resources from the general fund, uh, we had talked about removing the disaster reserve. Uh, that is not included in this change to these financial policies for two very good reasons. Uh, we had, uh, originally discussed that we would utilize or set up a disaster reserve for debris, uh, in our solid waste fund, which we've done, uh, and that is in the process of being built over a couple of years. As a matter of fact, we're going to be using it for, uh, Hurricane Milton. Uh, but at the same time, we also have other, uh, costs that are associated with any recovery from a hurricane. We have, uh, what we call category B expenses, something I'll be talking about a little bit later, but, uh, these include, uh, our, our cost for personnel, uh, that we generally get reimbursed back, not always at a hundred percent, but we need to be prepared, uh, to have those funds set aside. So what we're doing after, now we've gone through at least three of these hurricanes over the last two years, uh, we're going to be looking at stepping this down from the eight million dollars that's currently in there, and we're going to leave those in there, and then stepping it down, uh, over the next couple of years, uh, to a more reasonable number based upon what we see as a payroll item or expense item that we would generally incur from, uh, from one of these disasters. So on policy twenty-three on reserves of major funds, uh, when I set this up a couple of years ago and set them all at twenty-five percent, we needed the, we'd set, we set them all up at twenty-five percent because we wanted to understand what the needs were from a budgetary operation and a budgetary need, uh, to have these reserves in the system. So what we've seen over the course of the past couple of years with water and sewer is that twenty-five percent of set aside reserve of operating expenses, which would equate to, uh, the, let's see, about. see, about $30 million, seemed extremely, very high. And so, although you're going to, you know, hear an item that, you know, periodically we need to expend funds for things that are utility-related, that were not originally included in the budget, 25% or $30 million a year is probably a bit on the high side. So, we've reevaluated that, we're looking at 15%, and we'll continue to evaluate this as, as the utility system continues to mature, and we add new customers, et cetera. The, at, at the same time, as you'll recall, when we, when we do rate-making, we have another reserve that is designed into the rate-making process, which is called six months of cash reserves. That's not included in here, it's two different types of reserves. Cash reserves, something different than what we're talking about from a budgetary reserve. This 15% is setting aside and ensuring that we have sufficient resources in order to handle any of these unknown expenses that may come forward in a utility system and an underground system that we weren't prepared for when we developed a budget a year and a half in advance. The stormwater fund on a renewal or replacement basis, again, when we put 25% in here, we felt it was the right number. Over the last couple of years, although we certainly have had a couple of storms that have required us to go out there and tackle, you know, some improvements to the, to the drainage system, it hasn't risen to the need of 25% or $15 million associated with the, with the system. At the same time, when we put this in place, we had not issued any debt associated with the stormwater system. Now, we have, we, now we have a debt service covenant that's going to drive some of the needs to have certain reserves set aside, or the, we, on an annual basis, we will adjust rates to ensure that the debt service coverage is, is in place, that, again, reducing this from 25% to 10% of operating expenses made sense. On the yacht basin, we, in this particular circumstance, we reduced it because there's very little activity going on in the yacht basin world right now. Although we certainly are in the process of designing something for this yacht basin, I think it would behoove us to, and anything that is accumulating or accruing in the yacht basin fund is already reserved, because we're not spending it on anything else other than what's happening down at the, in that particular area. And so, there's no real money coming in from the yacht basin, other than what we have over at Rosen Park, but the, in this circumstance, having 25% reserve, what we'd rather do is work up the reserve necessary to ensure debt service coverage is available when we actually issue debt associated with the yacht club. And on the fire services fund, we're eliminating the reserve requirement. There's a couple of reasons for this. One, when we originally did the 25%, or actually, when we originally did the, the language in here, we were going to mirror what we have in the general fund. All right, the, the fire services assessment came out of the general fund, we set it aside, looked at it differently, and said, hey, then it should just basically mirror up the general fund. The problem with that is, is that if I'm going to be recreating a reserve on 70% of the cost that's associated with the assessment, then I need to actually run that reserve in, I need to run that dollar value through the assessment in order to maintain it on an annual basis. We looked at that and said, well, wait a second, you know, this is already restricted money. It's our, it, it can only be used for one purpose and one purpose only, and that's in support of the fire department and the fire services that they provide. So, we looked at it and said, really and truly, there's no need to have the reserve here. If we, if we, if any funds actually are not spent during the course of the year, they fall to the bottom line, and they're automatically restricted, because it can only be used for the purpose of fires, fire service. And if the, if, for whatever reason, it might be overspent, which I doubt that it will be, the assessment is the appropriate way of restoring the equilibrium within that particular fund. So, we've eliminated the need for the fire service fund reserve balances. And so, we're, this is a, you know, kind of giving you an idea of what these are. If we have any questions, we're certainly here to, to talk about them, and we're looking to have this resolution on the agenda for the 30th, but effective as of September 30th, 2024. And the primary purpose behind that is that we take whatever these financial policies are, whatever these reserves are, and we identify those reserves in our financial statements. So, if I still have the COVID reserves and some other things are included in this particular policy, I'm trying to find what those are, and trying to set aside those reserves in the financial statements, and I think we really need to have something that's a little more accurate for reporting purposes. So, I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Long.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, Mark, and this is something I can support. Just as an aside, really, not necessarily related to the reserves, but you had mentioned with regards to the yacht basin, and sort of it sounded like there was not necessarily the relevancy that there once was with regards to revenues and things like that. Is that something that you think that it's still worthwhile to maintain, the yacht basin fund itself?
The yacht basin fund itself, it is. We intend on, if the yacht club is, if we do the yacht club, we intend on running the debt through the yacht basin fund.
Okay, and as of right now, we don't have any revenues necessarily, I mean, the boathouse, with the boathouse being.
We have, we have some minor revenues associated with the Rosen Park, for the Marina of the Silver and Rosen Park, as well as, and that's it, today, and whatever expenses are that are associated with maintaining that, and anything else down at the yacht club right now.
Okay, so we would just kind of put that on hold, so to speak, for the time being?
Correct.
In perspective that there's operations that we're contemplating now at the yacht club might?
Yes, sir.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hayden.
Mark, these various reductions in the reserves, does that money go back into the general fund?
No. It, there's no adjustments to the, to, the only reserves in the general fund are the reserves that were associated with.
Right, so, but.
The COVID and the other, those funds have already been transferred over into the Capital Project Fund for the GO bonds.
But as we make the reductions, is, are those reserves not up to those levels now, or as we reduce, reduce those reserves, where does that money go?
So, to go back, when it's, actually, it doesn't go anywhere. The, these are budgetary reserves. These are things that, you know, we would set aside to ensure that the resources are available to us. If we don't use them, they're going to be, they're, they're, they're going to be part of the net, for the Water and Sewer Fund, net position of the, of the fund, but, you know, each and every year, we would identify and say, I need 15% of these funds available for any unforeseen circumstances that happen. And so, it's, it's.
So, it's not like there's an extra pot of money we just identified?
Built into the system, no. There is not.
All right. Just wanted to make sure. Thanks, sir.
No worries. Thank you.
Councilmember Steinecke.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of questions, Mark. Obviously, this has been prepared for a while, and your thought process that went into this has been happening for a while. With the, with regard to the yacht club, should there be any reconsideration, or have you considered any other reconsideration as it relates to that after the event at the boathouse?
No. At, at this point in time, whatever, whatever is occurring in the yacht basin is that, you know, the, we have some revenues coming in, we have some expenses going out. If there's anything left over, it's restricted to the yacht basin already. That's number one. Number two, until we're prepared to go out there and issue the debt and have all the resources necessary flowing through the yacht basin, at that time, when we've identified the debt, various debt sources that are going to, that are going to cover this, we want to make sure that we have then, at that time, the appropriate R and R that's in place, or a renewal, replacement and renewal system in place for the yacht basin in Rosen Park, for the things that are going to be included in this, in this programming. I do believe that we are also looking at Bimini Basin to be a part of the, the yacht basin as a, as a whole. So, when that gets done, it'll be, there'll just simply be a different revenue source that will also support that.
Okay.
And so, today, you know, as part of this particular policy, we're always looking at the policies as we go forward, and, and I want to be able to make sure that when we go out to issue the debt, we have the right, then we, then we sit down and we develop the right renewal and replacement system, and have the right reserve system in place that will support it into the future.
Okay, thank you. The, with, with these reductions, and the, and the thought that we always have to maintain a balanced budget, and that's what the budget amendments come out, to, to make sure we're always in a balanced budget position.
Yes.
The, by reducing these reserves, we've been blessed, if you will, in the last few years, and it, it's been questioned when, when, when we end up with a surplus, and when, and what happens with the surplus. Should these actions have a tendency to reduce the potential for an annual surplus, and we're, and we're running a little, a little tighter-belted, if you'd say?
It could, but again, the, as an example, for the, for the fire service fund, if there was a sizable enough, you know, reserve that was already set aside, the restriction of any of these funds, we would utilize some portion of those in order to try to steady or keep the, the, the fire service assessment steady from one year to the next. We do a similar thing with our, with the, with the solid waste assessment, and we'll probably do that in the future, but it's, it's those kind of things where you have the restricted funds, and trying to set up a reserve, you know, just compounds the cost associated with the assessment, and we prefer not to do that.
Yeah, I get that, and, and, and so, with the, and I, I believe it's been very strong and conservative monetary policy that's allowed us to have those surpluses by, if you will, in, in reducing expected revenues and increasing expected expenses, and this certainly is a way of, you know, looking at expenses in, in a very conservative way, and we're, so we're reducing that by a little.
Just a little.
And so, I get that. Should any of this, or would you expect any of these changes to have any effect on our credit rating?
No. No, I do not.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Carr.
Thank you. Similar kind of question. I mean, given the reduction in the reserve balance, the reserve amounts we're going for in the future, were our current rates for water, sewer, and stormwater based on the 25%? Is it going to be, are our rates going to reduce now because of this?
No, our rates were not based upon the 25%. They were based upon the cash flow analysis associated with cash reserves, was completely different than a budgetary reserve that's included here. It's two different things.
Okay.
And so, you know, we built the rates, which is a rate-making policy associated with having sufficient cash reserves on hand, to ensure that debt service will be paid in the future. When you're talking about debt service, you know, whatever resources you have available, debt service is the first thing that has to be funded.
Okay.
Everything else is secondary.
Thank you.
Mark, a recurring theme here is, is the difference between cash reserves.
Yes.
Cash flow reserves and budget reserves. Can you just spend a few minutes to explain the, the difference between the two?
Yeah.
And what they do, how they play in part of the budget process?
In this case, cash reserves, you know, we, within the general fund, because you're, you're, we're utilizing a different system of, of accounting, it's easier to really identify the cash reserves in the general fund, and the cash reserves in the general fund, you know, we're not, we have not touched those. The budget stabilization reserve is still the same. Nothing has changed. That is your biggest reserve that you have, and we have no intentions of, of making a recommendation to reduce, reduce those. The, as far as cash reserves is in the, in the Water and Sewer Fund, or any of these, and it's all the enterprise funds that we're actually talking about, those are generally identified in making a rate. And so, if I need to be able to have a certain level of cash on hand in order to ensure that debt service is made, we're building the rates in order to ensure that. Okay? What we've identified here, these are budgetary reserves. So, when you're talking about a budgetary reserves, and what I need to be able to do from a budget standpoint is ensure that I have sufficient resources on an annual basis in order to be able to cover whatever those unforeseen circumstances might be, that we run up against with an underground utility system. Same thing with the stormwater system. In the stormwater system, you know, we built the rate off of a debt service, well, we're going to be building the rate in the future off of debt service coverage, and whatever that debt service coverage is, it's revenues over expenses on an annual basis, that it ensures that you have sufficient resources to be able to pay the, the debt.
So, Mark, it, it would, would it be appropriate to say that a budget reserve is similar to an appropriation for a vehicle or an asset, and the cash reserve is a, is a model that actually proves to the rating agencies and the, and the lenders that we have cash available to cover any shortages in receipts?
And for that, for the model part, it's that you're charging enough to ensure that the resources will be available to pay the, to pay the debt service, as well as the operation of the system.
And on, and on the cat, and on the budget reserve, is it similar or analogous to something else that we're appropriating to make sure it's there and identified for a purpose?
Yes.
Thank you.
You done, Councilmember Carr? Just a couple of questions, make sure I have a good understanding. Financial Services Director shall review financial policies annually. That's still going to happen?
Yes.
If there, if there is a need for a change, a resolution will come forward.
Yes, yep, and we'll be back doing exactly what we're doing today.
Policy number 22 was removed, committed reserves from past events. COVID, the COVID monies, I'm assuming, and any reserve from Hurricane Irma. We transferred that over to Capital Projects?
We did.
Okay. About how much, a dollar amount was that?
I want to say it was around $6 million, but I don't remember the exact number off the top of my head.
Okay. About $6 million.
I believe it was either in Budget Amendment 2 or Budget Amendment 3.
I understand that in the Water and Sewer Fund, basically, that's just moving forward. We're going to reduce in the Water and Sewer Fund, the, from 25% to 15% for a reserve, and Stormwater Fund will be from 25% to 10%. So, that's, that's pretty self-explanatory. Fire Service Fund, eliminate the Fire Service Fund reserve balances. Do you know how much that is?
In this case, it's, it's nothing. It, it's, it was originally designed to mirror what the general fund was, and we never, we didn't achieve it.
Okay.
For number one. Number two, if there, you know, if, if it's already restricted for whatever use it's, for the 70% portion of it, or whatever the fire assessment is, is already restricted. So, if, if there is anything that's left over, we would identify it for, you know, future reduction in the, in the Fire Service Assessment, or for offsetting some future capital acquisition. So, there, there is, in this case, we're not done with the fiscal year of 2024, but I don't believe that there's anything that's going to be available.
Okay. How long has this policy been in place?
Two years.
So, we were trying to get to a certain percentage, I'm assuming?
We were.
We didn't make, we didn't get to that.
We did not.
But there are some monies, so, and you may not have that available information today, but if you could maybe provide that and send that to me, what dollar amount was left over in that particular fund, if any? The other question that I had was, you had talked about the Solid Waste Disaster Reserve Fund that we established?
Yeah.
What is our goal there, dollar amount to have in there?
Well, this, this hurricane we just went through was a good, a good benchmark. I don't think we were trying to get back to an Ian level of reserves, but we are certainly looking for at least $20 to $30 million.
Okay. And time-wise, how, how long do you think it's going to take us? Of course, we're not going to do that.
About three years, three or four years.
All right. And the $8 million that we used to have in a disaster.
You still do. You still do.
We still have that.
Yes.
And basically, we're still going to maintain that. We'll, we'll use that monies differently than we did before, mainly for payroll and things of that nature.
It's, it's for anything that's associated with a disaster reserve.
Okay.
Or disaster, whatever that might be.
All right. And we, as far as our FY '25 budget, we still have that $8 million there, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, and I think that's all I have. So, I appreciate the presentation. I don't see any other lights on, and I guess we'll see this on next week's agenda.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to item number three, which is South Spreder Waterway Project. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to turn this over to Public Works and Wright Construction, their, their construction manager.
My name is Andrew Powell. I'm Vice President of Civil Operations with Wright Construction. I have with me Alex Slape. He's our Senior Project Manager for the Chiquita Lock Project, and also President Fred Edman is also here with us. I'm just going to run through a quick slideshow presentation of the work that's going to be taking place. It's actually already started. Scope of work, install the stop blocks and, I can't even read that up there, and de-water the lock. the lock for FEMA inspection. That happened this week. Remove and demolish the Chiquita Lock, including the existing building locks, pilings, pavement. Construct the new seawall and connect to existing. We will construct the, the new seawall, excavate the site to mean high water, remove the south seawall panels, and then dredge to permitted grade and remove seawall panels to the north. This is a quick schedule with some milestones. Notice to proceed was on 10/17. Mobilization was last week, and the shutdown was on the 21st for the FEMA inspection. FEMA inspection was actually yesterday? And they actually started removing the two gates yesterday. Scheduled to be back open by the end of the day on Friday. The following week, through the 20th of November, we'll be doing the topside demolition, and then through the end of the year, we'll be starting on the construction of the new seawall. From January through the end of March, we'll demobilize from the site because of the no dredging requirements in the Army Corps permit. We'll be back on 4/1, which is where the shutdown will actually start. Demo the existing seawall dredge, and then on the, in June, open the navigable waterway access, excavate the soils within the seawall footprint, working south to north. Complete the final excavation to proposed grade in front of the new seawall between July and August, and then after that, perform site cleanup, punch out, and demobilize. Substantial completions expected on October of 2025. Safety, just real quick, safety is our top priority. We have, right now, we currently have security fence up on site in the, in the green there, and then we have variable message boards, which are shown on the left and right, just to notify boaters, and then we actually have light towers out there that, I believe they're active now, correct? Potential concerns and questions that may arise during the Chiquita Lock Project, which we aim to address proactively throughout the process. The three-month closure, we know, is a topic of concern for everybody. We have started talking with Safe, the Safe Harbor at Cape Harbor Marina about possible boat storage at that location during the shutdown time. And that's it, and we kind of, we open it up to any questions that you guys may have.
I guess one quick question I have is, when you had the shutdown, April 1st, you're looking at about a 90-day window for a shutdown, is that correct? About three months?
I believe it's 81 days.
For a contract, we have 81 days.
81 days. Okay, all right, that's all I have. Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions, and I'm, I'm sure we've gone over this before, but I've forgotten. Why is it that we have to leave the structure on the south side in front of the estuary when it's all over with? That's to remain? Is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and why is that so?
Are you speaking to the fenders on the south side of the lock?
Yeah, where, where the, where the, basically, the estuary is, there, there's, there's no barrier all along there, and then just for that portion of the bank, if you will, that structure has to remain. Is, is there a reason, what's the reason for that?
We are, we're following the AMI engineering construction plans that was put together.
Right.
That might be a great question for AMI engineering.
Mr. City Manager, do you know why that is?
The only thing I can think of is that it's possible, there are, you know, the lock removal is one part of it, then we also have to plan, put oyster balls for like oysters, and so it's possible they're creating a low-velocity zone from the tidal movements. If that stays in place with a little bump out, it, kind of behind those, but I'll find out. It's only a guess. I, I don't actually have the answer, but I'll find out.
Yeah, the reef balls actually go behind that fender system.
Dave Heide, CIP. Part of the reason that that area is going to be left in place is so that we don't destabilize the, the bank along there, and that was all part of the environmental permit. We're trying to reduce the impact of removing the lock, so the, the bottom slab where the boats currently travel is going to remain, and that south wall with the fenders will remain, and that's just to, you know, reduce the amount of environmental impact.
Okay.
For the permits.
All right, thank you. And, and the other concern that I've had, and I've shared it with staff, with the, the work that you will do upland, so to speak, until the end of manatee season, to be able to take out the actual waterway improvements in the seawall that's currently there and During Hurricane Irma, we all saw what the effect of a, a different amount of pressure on each side of the seawall is, and we, and we lost a lot of our seawalls because of the water evacuation, you know, that was there. I would think that land evacuation could cause the same issue where you have water pressure pushing one way and, and the land, not the other. Has there been some engineering done to make sure that as we would do some of this upland work and take pressure away from, if you will, the inside of that current seawall that's there, that there wouldn't be some type of seawall failure during the, during that course?
So you're, you're talking, you're referencing the new seawall?
Yeah, where, where, we would be removing, if you will, soils from the inside of the existing seawall. Obviously, that takes away from back pressure, from the water pressure on the other side pushing on the seawall this way. To evacuate that land, are the seawalls in strong enough condition that without that land behind them as you work and pull it away, that those, that the, we don't have the potential of the seawalls collapsing inward?
So when we begin the, the removal of the existing seawall in, in April, we'll begin removing from south to north. We'll, we'll be, we'll excavate to mean high, mean high water levels to equalize the pressure on both sides of the existing seawall. Then when we remove the south wall, water's going to start flowing in as we dredge from south to north, and the pressure is going to equalize to avoid any type of existing seawall failure.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Seeing none, appreciate you stopping in and giving us an update.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on to item four, is Cape Coral Parkway six-laning.
I apologize. One second here. Is this, did she just put PDF in? Where's the? Is that? Okay. Good morning, Mayor and Council. For the record, Brian Vander Walker, interim transportation manager. So I'm here today to present on a, the proposed six-laning signal retiming and parking space study for Cape Coral Parkway. I know we lost the monitors up there now. No luck today for me.
Speak into the mic, please.
I'm going to just go through it. Yeah. There we go. We can do it this way. If we can get this up there. I'm used to this kind of stuff happening to me, but now you're all affected too, so I apologize.
Which one is it?
It's this one here. I'll take it. Just go full screen with it.
Yeah, just.
You can leave it there. It's fine. All right, let's try this over again. So I'm here presenting the six-laning project for Cape Coral Parkway. That's also including the signal retiming and parking lane study. We're going to go through that simply as informational. So project overview, the, the background for this, excuse me, comes from some traffic congestion at, on Cape Coral Parkway, obviously. That area, especially between Coronado and the bridge, experiences significant traffic congestion during peak hours, and we are doing this project here to alleviate those Part of that, it would be, the main purpose and the main way that we're looking at alleviating the traffic congestion would be to take the existing turn lanes and parking lane that's on the outside currently and repurpose those into travel lanes. There were some other initiatives that were rolled into this to help ensure efficient traffic flow and minimize impacts on businesses. Part, a, a big part of this project, which is, would be, is going to be a big benefit to the city of Cape Coral, is it aligns with the Cape Coral Bridge project that the city is currently working on in coordination with Lee County. So in the future, while six-laning Cape Coral Parkway presently has its benefits, in the future, it lining up with the, the travel lanes of the Cape Coral Bridge is a large So here, we've outlined some of the tasks and/or challenges that we wanted to address during this project. We've already spoken about traffic congestion. The, the second one there is, is signal timing. So with adding a lane and having to increase the traffic flow there, we want to be sure that all the way through that corridor, that Cape Coral Parkway corridor, from Chiquita all the way through to Del Prado, has the sufficient signal timing. Insufficient signal timing contributes to delays and increased travel times. If we get that corrected, then we're able to add on to the benefits of this six-laning. The parking concerns, so this is the parking study. In order to do that, we're obviously removing some parking spaces in front of businesses, and in the contract for the consultant, we are having a parking study completed where they will be identifying locations that are, that can be used for these businesses to relocate parking. Travel lane obstructions, we have to evaluate the entire lane, all of the lanes widening for any possible obstructions whatsoever to those travel lanes, and then the lane merge. While we are widening it out to six lanes or three lanes heading eastbound, once you pass Del Prado, there is still a lane merge because, to get onto the bridge. So that is another obstacle that the consultant is going to address. They're going to find, they're, they've been tasked with finding the best way to mitigate that lane merge, and so it has the least amount of effect on our, on travelers. So the relaning, this is just a little bit more in-depth. The consultant has been tasked with designing a striping construction plan to expand the parkway from four to six lanes between Coronado and Del Prado. This is mainly what we've already spoken about. We're taking the, the parking and, and right turn lanes, moving them into travel lanes so that we can get total number of six lanes each way, or total. We will not be making any changes to the curb, to the curbing, or the current lane widths. So the travel lanes are going to end up being 10 to 11 feet in width, depending on exactly where it's measured. To accommodate different lane usage, we, we may have to add additional signal heads or adjust the locations of the signal heads on, on their current arms. The, it's recommended as well that the project area be paved, repaved for a couple of reasons. Mainly, when we re-stripe this in order for it to be turned into travel lanes, when you grind those off, it's unsightly. If you paint over it, it doesn't really stick. So the, the other reason being that the pavement currently is 12 years old, and it's coming to the point where we would need to repave anyways. So rolling it into this project just makes sense, limits the amount of time that the area is under construction as well. So this is a proposed cross-section. Kind of shows how everything will, will be there with lane widths and all of it. Signal retiming. The signalized intersection of Cape Coral Parkway and two southern signals on Del Prado have to be retimed in order to ensure the proper, proper traffic flow from Chiquita to Del Prado. The parking replacement study. This again is saying that the consultant's been tasked with conducting a study to identify suitable locations for replacing the, the lost spaces that will be incurred during this transition. Here is a, is a small graph to show exactly the number of spaces that'll be lost and what will, and, and the businesses associated with those spaces as well. It's just a, a view of the parking lane to be repurposed there. The, the fourth task was the travel lane obstructions. Because of the current setup of Cape Coral Parkway, we want to ensure that we're meeting all FDOT regulations and safety regulations for, for the travel lanes. So the consultant will be assessing any of the possible obstructions, such as, you know, clear zones and, and vertical clearances over, over the travel lanes. The consultant's going to determine if any modifications or removals of anything is necessary, and that will all be part of their report. Just an overview of a map of where everything has taken place. That map, although small, is showing basically from Chiquita all the way down to Del, Del Prado. The blue lines are the, the full study area, and for task number two, which is the retiming, it covers the most space. Then the other tasks are just from Coronado there to Del Prado. So a status here and tentative schedule. Essentially, on 10/30 in about a week, we will be having this go to council for award for the consultant, and following that, we have the, the schedule laid out there in order for it to go out to bid, complete design, go out to bid, and move to construction. And following that, we have the, the schedule laid out there in order for it to go out to bid, have complete design, go out to bid, and move to construction. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you, Mayor. Certainly appreciate the timing on this where we'll be affecting the traffic during the least populated time of our year. So, great job and appreciate you doing that at that time of year. I think it's, I think it's sadly needed and, and I'm glad that we're moving forward with it. I know when the discussions began, gosh, it had to have been at least six, eight months ago, as it would relate to this. There were some talk of on those side streets where we would be looking to increase parking there to take, you know, some of those parking spaces that we'll be losing and to have additional parking on the side streets. There was some discussion around doing some one-way streets or some right-turn onlys entering Cape Coral Parkway. Are those gone? I don't see them in the plan here at all that there's any of this, any, any one-way traffic going on. Can you comment on that?
That would be something that the consultant and, and Public Works would discuss and work together to see if there's any necess, necessity for that. But as far as the department goes, we're not currently really looking into just the one-ways outside of any of the data information that we haven't really received yet. So, we, we make those kinds of decisions based on the information that is collected through the consultant.
Cause I think, I think the reason for the one-way is, when we talked about it before, was the ability to put, to put angled parking on both sides of the road, which would, which would actually end up taking up some of the width of that side street that wouldn't allow cars to come down the other side to make their right-hand turn onto, onto Cape Coral Parkway. And, and so, hopefully that becomes a consideration, cause I would, I would believe that we could certainly add much more parking on the side streets, being able to utilize both sides of the side street, as we have in a couple spots already, to, to add, add to the parking capacity for the businesses in, in that area that people can park and simply walk rather than having to go to a future parking garage or, or from behind, you know, St. John's Plaza or, you know, any of that type of stuff.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Matt Williams, Public Works Director. I think that, that would be part of, of what we would have the consultant look for. What happens with one-ways, especially when you're approaching a signalized, what will be a six-lane parkway, it changes the, the necessity for signal timing. So, there would be other impacts related to one-waying some of those streets as they're approaching Cape Coral Parkway. If you're talking about the streets that are running parallel to Cape Coral Parkway, obviously, you gotta look at access, impacts to businesses throughout there. But that would certainly be a tool in the toolbox as far as where we can acquire some additional parking in this area if, if necessary, which I, I think it will be. We'll, we'll have to utilize every tool we have in the toolbox to make sure that we get that parking in there.
Okay, great, thanks. And, and I wasn't speaking about the, about the east-west thoroughfares, for sure. Obviously, the ability to approach our businesses on those roads needs to remain. It was more the north-south side streets, if you will, that would allow someone to turn in and have parking on both sides, which would then necessitate the next road down being one way, the other way with, with, you know, the di, you know, the diagonal parking on each side of the street. So, thank you for keeping that in the consideration toolbag.
And in, in some cases, it can help. In other cases, it can hurt as far as signalized, the signalized corridor along Cape Coral Parkway, but we'll certainly take a look at it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Carr?
Thank you. Two questions. The lane width it's referenced is ten to eleven feet. Is that consistent with the, the western portion of Cape Coral Parkway? Is that a typical lane width?
It is, uh, it is typical. Eleven feet is, is typical. Most of the roadways in Cape Coral, local roadways, and even some of our major roadways are at ten feet. So, it is, ten to eleven feet is pretty standard.
Great. The other question is, is there any potential for any of the curb cuts that currently exist accessing properties along the parkway in that area? Will they be affected in any way with this process?
That was not part of this. Where, there, there was no discussion about adjusting the curb in any way for, as part of this project.
Okay, so no one's business access will change, only the parking element associated with it?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Law?
Thank you, Mayor. I think for the presentation, Brian, just a quick question. When we talk about sort of the scope of work and what we're gonna be doing, you had mentioned the, the obvious loss of the parking and the desire, the need, I guess, to add an additional scope of work to the consultant with regards to a parking study. We just did, to my knowledge, a parking study downtown in, in the South Cape pretty recently, did we not?
Not that I am aware of.
Pretty expansive, from my understanding.
This is a parking replacement study?
Well, I understand that, but I mean, if we did a study in, which I would hope at that time was to see what parking was available, I wouldn't imagine that the available, the availability would have changed regardless of whether we're needing new ones or replacing old ones. I just wanna make sure we're not duplicating efforts and more importantly, duplicating resources by way of funding.
Absolutely.
So, I would certainly look into that to make sure that we're not gonna be, you know, hiring a consultant. I understand he's already a retainer for other things to do, to, to tell us something that we already found out, to my understanding, a couple of months ago.
Yeah, I'll definitely look into that. I appreciate it.
I believe we had a consultant come in and, and do the whole work, so.
Yeah.
Just wanted to mention that. Another question, and you might have covered it in here. Do we anticipate widening these lanes to affect or impact? Any potential change in the speed limits on the, on this particular corridor?
No, no. There's, cause it's already at a low speed, speed limit through that section. We're at thirty-five miles per hour there.
Right, I just wanted to make sure we widened it, that it wasn't necessarily gonna potentially increase that.
Oh, I, no.
Okay.
There's, there's no discussion on that.
Awesome.
For this.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Shepard?
Yes, um, we're getting paving done right now as we speak on Cape Coral Parkway, and they're doing a fantastic job. Is there a possibility of us taking advantage of the contract they're already being there and continuing to do this additional paving? Think it would send us, save us a lot of money on mobilization of their equipment, or is that not possible?
It's, it's not possible through the, through contracts and stuff like, everything on that contract, on the fiscal year twenty-four contract, that is currently paving on Cape Coral Parkway. It's all, that whole contract is packaged up and nearly completed, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, uh, thank you for the presentation. Just a couple of quick things for me. I appreciate the timeline, like Councilmember Steinkie had mentioned. My only preference, and I'm sure you have some, a little bit of cushion built into your timeline here. It'd be nice if we could get that project completed by October first, cause we know that's about the time people start coming, coming back here to the city. I know you have November thirtieth on your timeline, but if there's any way we can reduce that by thirty days, I think it would, it would help us. The other question I had, access management in this design, is access management gonna be looked at from, say, Coronado to Del Prado? Or are we only looking with, at the items that you specified?
We're only looking at the items that we specified. I don't wanna say that completely as, as a solid definite. I will say that we have not looked into the access management aspect there, the access management along Cape Coral Parkway. From a quick overview that I did myself not long ago is, is not in a poor place like some of the other, other areas. So, in order to keep the timeline moving, to keep this scope of work as minimized as possible to get the results that we, that we were tasked with, we have not, we will not be making changes to the, to the medians and access management and cutting medians and curbs.
Okay, yeah, and then, I know that merge lane is gonna be the, you know, the big topic of discussion, I'm sure, going from three to two, at least in the interim until the new bridge is built. Is it something that we have to work with the county? Cause I know anything east of Del Prado is county roadway.
Yeah, that, that, that segment of Cape Coral Parkway is a county road. One of the possibilities to discuss with them is just eliminating that ingress and egress from the local road. It's servicing three local roads, which if you wanna get to, you can turn south on Del Prado and come in from the south, and when you leave, you can come out south of Cape Coral Parkway. So, it's possible we could, if the county's agreeable to it, we could eliminate that drop lane and that right turn lane out. And then, what happens is you can use that entire space for your merge.
Right. I don't see the police chief here. I was gonna ask him a couple of questions. Is, is he not here? And I can follow up with him later if need be, just to get his input on the...
I don't suspect he is. Typically, for a county, I only bring the directors that, that come, that have a presentation.
Yeah, cause I would have liked to have had his input on, on, you know, the traffic impacts or any of the changes in that area, but I can reach out to him and talk to him about that, but I don't have anything else, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to item number five, which is the Interactive Growth Model Phase Two presentation.
Good morning, Laura Dodd, Public Works Transportation Planner. So, what you have before you today is a presentation by Mr. David Farmer. He is with Metro Forecasting Models. Just a little bit of background, during your winter budget season presentation, rather, you received a Phase One presentation from Mr. Farmer, where he went over the preliminary findings from the Phase One study. The significance of that study was it set the baseline conditions for reviewing how the city is projecting its growth into the future. What this study does is it starts to address some of those needs associated with the data from Phase One and to properly address the growth. That includes necessary facilities to ensure that our substantial growth in the future is being accommodated, but also, most importantly, the ability to leverage policies to proactively mitigate conditions such as transportation congestion as those start to occur, not only in the north, but also to mitigate those within the south as well. This is the second part of three phases of the study. The third phase is anticipated to start immediately after the second phase, and it will be the synthesis of the data from Phase One and the recommendations from Phase Two. So, that being said, I'll go ahead and let David provide his presentation.
Thank you, Laura. Good morning, councilmembers, Mr. Mayor and City Manager. A pleasure to be here today. So, this presentation's a little sort of unusual. It's got about five different components. So, if you have questions during the component, stop me at any time. I'm used to being interrupted, so I have a kid. So, my name is David Farmer. I'm a licensed professional engineer, a certified professional planner, a master's of public administration with an emphasis on fiscal neutrality. Yeah, I'm a lot of fun at parties. My partner is Dr. Paul Van Busskerk. He's worked for you for nearly twenty years doing your forecasting of population growth, housing demand, government facilities, and so forth. And as Laura said, today, we're just here to update you on the second phase of our study. I believe I also spoke with you in, in the spring. There was a different building I presented at. So, some recent history that Laura just touched on, but I'll hit it, cause I got the slide. So, in 2016, we came up with version three of our Interactive Growth Model, and we updated, actually created a whole new model of the city and, and ran that. We did industrial, commercial, population, stormwater, all those things. By 2023, it's time to update, more than uptime, time to update the data. So, we did. The Phase One of this study was to, again, refreshen the baseline data and then also reestablish the build-out because of a number of projects, dozens and dozens of projects have been approved and even some constructed since the last model update. And so, this next phase is about parks, fire stations. We have an impervious model that leads to stormwater, and then we have a planning scenario we wanna go over with you on Diplomat. So, before I really get started, one of the things I like to say is vacant land is currency, and the more vacant land you have, the more, the more capacity for change and, and growth that you have. And as that vacant land disappears, aka development occurs, you start losing, you start becoming a straitjacket where it's like it's constricting in on you. So, today, you have more vacant land than you'll ever have. And so, I wanna encourage you to, now is the time to plan. Not that you're not, but now is the time to really get things into gear and get things going. We need to recognize the potential of, you know, many other governments have large vacant tracts, and they can approve big projects or not approve them. Cape Coral being a pre-platted community, you have tens of thousands of platted lots that someone just needs to buy, go pull a building permit, and, and that user comes online. So, it sort of limits your capacity to slow anything down if you want it to. And, and those, development of those lots is going to create a lot of demand for government services and needs. One of the things that came out of the Phase One study too is that you're a little short on your, your commercial allocation of land. And so, this needs to be monitored as we go through time. You guys, there's a whole report we wrote in, for Phase One. You guys, I think, are right around fifty-five square feet on a, on a per capita basis. Based on your population, you should probably be closer to ninety square feet. What's happening is people are getting their needs met over in the city of Fort Myers and such, and that made sense when you were smaller, but now that you're over two-hundred thousand square, two-hundred thousand people, you have the capacity to support a lot of, of, of commercial services, and they just haven't come yet. So, that's something to keep in mind. Also, your, your allocation of industrial space needs to be monitored as well. We show you running out of industrial acres by 2050. So, anyway, that's for the future. The schedule says that we should be done right about now, and we are with our Phase Two. Alright, so this is sort of a big picture overview. This chart is a little overly simplistic. It looks like a straight line. There's actually a, a curve to it. And this is a signature of our kind of analysis, that is, we believe growth is nonlinear, and in fact, your growth has been nonlinear for decades, and we'll, you're in a sort of a linear phase right now, but at about 2050, you're gonna start backing off on your rate of growth. With that said, the reality is, you know, we're forecasters, and I appreciate what my job is, and the reality will be above and below that line any given year, depending on permitting, things like COVID, things that come along, but in the end, we believe strongly, you're gonna snap back to this line. Whether if you, if it grows faster than this, it's gonna, it's gonna slow down, and if it's, if it slows down, it's gonna speed back up and again to catch up with this curve. Something to keep in mind that I again pointed out in the spring, by 2050, y'all are gonna have a hundred thousand more people than you have today. That's, that's a lot. It's a lot to think about. And, and 2050 really isn't, or, yeah, 2050 really isn't that far away. So, let's start with the impervious model. There's only a few slides here. And this kind of data is very difficult to convey what we're trying to say, and you maybe have heard the saying, you know, figures always lie and liars always figure. There's no one right way to show this data, because if I show it one way, I'm, I'm neglecting something else. So, this is showing you the gross change in acres of impervious. And so, if we have large areas, large zones, it's gonna show more change, not because it's happening faster, but because it's larger. Whereas, if we do a percent increase, well, now, if I have a one-acre zone and I add an acre of impervious, I've got a hundred percent change. Well, it's, it's one acre of impervious, right? And so, what we do is put them sort of together, so you can see, one is on a per-acre basis, one is on a percentage basis. I'm sure you can see this, but I'm gonna point out the obvious. North of Pine Island, you're gonna see a lot more impervious area show up as it develops, right, as, as it matures. And I'd like to point to the table in the middle. So, between last year and 2025, you're likely to see at least four-hundred-and-fifty-two acres, not of development, of impervious. One-hundred percent impervious area. That water needs a place to go. Now, you have your canals, you have your roadside ditches and such. And I realize that big projects like, like Hudson Creek, they're gonna have their own water management plan and all of that, but most of your development is gonna be taken on place on parcels that don't require water management permit. I know there's a prevailing thought that there's plenty of storage in the roadside swales. In light of the recent storms and such, I would respectfully request that, that you guys take another look at this and see if you do have enough storage. Again, I'm not trying to raise alarm bells, but like I said, you have more vacant land than you ever have today. You have a ton of vacant lots that could be used for stormwater management or other purposes, and so, we look at this as an opportunity, not as a scary thing. Any questions about this subject while I'm here?
Don't see any, thank you.
Okay. And you can always ask me at the end, too. So, now we have a few slides on parks. These are your existing parks. And what we did for this, for this study is we prioritized the parcels that you already own, right? I mean, it'd be one thing to say, hey, we have a, a blank canvas here, let's go out and buy some land, but you guys have a ton of land, and so, why not prioritize that? And so, in fact, that's what we did. And so, I, bringing that up, if you say, hey, Dave, why'd you put these two parks so close together? Well, it's because you own the parcels. These, the purple discs and the blue discs, they both have the same radius. That means they're a mile and a half radius, meaning that you have a mile... That means they're a mile and a half radius, meaning that you have a mile and a half theoretically that someone would walk or ride their bike or drive to their nearest neighborhood park. So the blue and the purple discs are the same radius, but you can see, we use the existing parks to help establish where the future parks might need to be. And if you notice, there's a hole sort of in the center there. Well, we didn't have any large enough parcels that the city already owned, and that's why we did not place a park in that location. Moving on to community parks, and maybe this is a bad analogy, but I wanted to sort of use this. So when we look at parks, especially community and regionals, we look at them sort of like restaurants. They're both parks, but they serve sort of different purposes, and so these parks, you might notice, are very, very close to each other, but they're very, very different, especially in the northern end there. Our understanding is Future Park C, which is on the right-hand side, is a future YMCA park. A park that will have a YMCA as part of it. And then the park next to that B is going to be more of a ballfield type. So there's two parks, but they're not the same thing. It's like having a Chinese restaurant and a steakhouse next to it. They will serve food, but they do different things, and they attract different people, and these parks will too. So that's not an oversight in their proximity. Again, this is where you're already on the land. Let's make use of those lands and benefit the taxpayer. And what I don't have is I don't have the regionals all by themselves. Technically, right this second today, you don't have any regional parks. With that said, and I forgot the name of that north park, Freedom Festival, thank you, sorry. So the top red circle there is Festival Park. That's a five-mile radius that we're using, and I've worked with you guys a long time. Talk of the golf course has been ongoing for many, many years. We identified it as an ideal park location, so I'm relieved to hear, both by the citizens that spoke earlier and by your other administrators, that you guys are purchasing that property, and that'll be a huge asset to provide recreational services, depending on whatever it is you want to provide down there, but for those people that live in the area. So kudos to you. Any questions about parks?
No, doesn't look like it. Thank you.
And here's just a map showing your existing and future parks. The existing parks have a dark ring but have a sort of a white center and a white outline, and the proposed parks have more of a colored symbol. All right, now we're going to talk about fire stations. So here are your existing fire stations, and we could maybe draw circles like we do with parks to estimate things, but, you know, public safety and parks are kind of two different things. And when we're talking about public safety, we're talking about people's lives, and so we have to do a more detailed type of analysis. And so here we use what's called a drive-time analysis. And your level of service, in my understanding, is six minutes. So you want to make sure that most of the time, your first responders are getting to someone within six minutes to take care of their health needs and get them to the hospital or to go and put out a fire or whatever. So this purple area demonstrates the areas to us which are fairly well-served, and then so conversely, those areas that don't have purple on them are not as well-served. And so that's where we're going to sort of focus on where do we need these fire stations for the future. Before I get into that, at the beginning of our analysis, the fire leadership said, hey, we're considering moving a fire station, Fire Station Number Five, from one side, I think of Diplomat, can't remember which one that is, but from one side of an intersection to another. And, you know, as a professional, I have to tell you that I try to be objective, but I have my own biases, my own thoughts, and I thought, well, this is going to be a waste of time. Well, this is why we run analysis, because I was wrong. In fact, by relocating this fire station, you add a mile and a half of extra coverage, and that's shown in the bottom graphic. So the top purple graphic with the blue outline, that's your existing coverage today, and then the one in the orange is where the coverage could be based on relocating. And then if we look at them superimposed down below, you can see where the existing coverage is by that blue or cyan sort of outline, and you can see that the dramatic shift to the west of the orange area, meaning we've increased coverage area, and not only that, but we've increased coverage area of the city, not of areas outside the city. So this is sort of a win-win situation. I'm bringing this up now because all my future analysis assumes that this station has been So going forward, we took a look at the areas again that were not purple, and then we ran some drive-times on them. Again, we prioritize parcels that you already own, trying to limit how many more new things you need to buy. Not all of these locations are perfect. Some of them, the sites are a little on the small side, but your fire leadership understands this business very, very well, and they recognize where they need to pick up a few more parcels of land to have a big enough site for this. So again, these are general in nature, but a lot of thought has really gone into them, and sometimes it looks like these fire stations are pretty close to each other. Well, that's because of our friend, Mr. Canal. Sometimes I can't, you can't get to there from here, right? I have to go around Ron Robin for 10 minutes because I can't get across the canal with my fire truck unless, of course, a bridge is built, and then you're talking a few more million dollars to do those sorts of things. So we have, we also have years associated with these fire stations and when we think they might come online, but that's predicated on certain development factors. And while we're very good at what we do, we're, you know, we're not, we can't see everything, don't know everything. And so things like, when is Hudson Creek going to come online? I'm not really sure. My guess is probably in the next 15, maybe 20 years, and that's why it's one of the later stations to come online. You also have a high-rise, and I can't remember that project's name, but all the way down at the south end, if that occurs, that's an if, if it occurs, a station will be needed there, not just for that project, but to help round out the service area. But if that gets built tomorrow, you're going to need a station much sooner. If that doesn't get over 20 years, you don't need that station for a while. So again, you got to sort of monitor, and again, your fire administration is just excellent, and they are fully aware of the things that I'm telling you today. With that said, north of Pine Island is going to need the stations the soonest because that's where more of your development is occurring. I'm sure your utility people are telling you that, your building department are telling you that. There's just a lot of growth happening in that robust area. So then we sort of put the two things together, right? We take the purple and we lay the blue on top to make sure that we've covered everything. And with that said, I want to just point out that, so on the east end of Cape Coral, just on the north side of Veterans Parkway, you might see an area, it looks like it's not covered in purple or blue. Well, it's because there's no roads in there. It doesn't mean it wouldn't be covered. It would be covered if there were roads in the area. Same thing with Hudson Creek. If we look at the upper northwest side, just east of Burton Star Road, you'll see that it appears not to be covered. I'm here telling you as a professional, it's fully covered. Just because there's no roads there today, the software can't run a roadside analysis when there's no road to analyze. But based on the analysis that we've done, we now have essentially full coverage of Cape Coral, and we have an idea of when these stations will come online. Any questions?
Council members, thank you.
All this data is great to have. I mean, and obviously, the recommendation that you make will be based on this. I rarely argue with data, although I'm a little bit in wonderment, and I think it's your slide, 19, I think, of 38?
I don't have numbers, so what color is it?
Okay, there you go.
Purple one?
The purple one, all right. Awesome. So we're, you see veterans, you know, the midpoint bridge coming across, and we've got the Four Mile Cove there, and that probably the largest area, at least in the southern area of the Cape, of a lack of coverage, if you will. Initially, my thoughts were, well, then where that dashed line is running vertically on the east area of that lack of coverage, I was thinking, well, that, well, what a perfect place for a station right there. You've got all of that unattended area would be serviced by that. And then when I look at where the future station is placed, when you go back down then to your line 21 with the light blue, it's actually more inland and ending up, when you combine the two, sitting it to some degree right next to an existing station. And while it then comes in and takes a little piece of that uncovered property by having the station there, it still leaves a relatively large amount of area that's uncovered. So the question that I had, and I thought I might have heard you say it earlier as it relates to city-owned land, do these take into consideration, where could we put something where the city already owns land? Or if we were to say, forget whether the city owns it or not, but the city could acquire it, would this be a better place to put the station for best coverage? And with that in mind, we ought to look at acquiring some land to put the station there.
So we prioritized, so our first thing is, well, let's use the parcels that they own first. And I think all but one station, and this was not one of them, you do own some lots in this area, would it be better if it could shift a little to the left? Yes, but we'd want to condemn five houses, go through eminent domain, spend $3 million on land, just so we can build a fire station that's a little bit better? That's really up for your fire administration and for you all to decide. And your points are well noted. If you look at the graphic I have now, where you have the darker, purple, and you sort of the darker blue, that's the overlap you were sort of talking about. Well, that station too might be, and there's another phase of the study where we're going to actually look at your utilization rates of these fire stations. That station might be already reaching its limits of what it can do, but the main reason why those are so close together was my comment about the canals. You have a canal right there, you can't, that existing station just to the southwest of that 2045 station, you can't get to there from here, even though, in theory, you look at a map, of course you can get there, but the canal sort of limits that. And so we were sort of limited by where we could put things, but there's not a lot of vacant land in that area to just go, well, let's put a fire station over here. So some consideration needs to be made on weighing all of the attributes that go into the perfect location for a station.
Okay, well, just for me personally, I would like the alternate scenario that says, hey, this is, this would be the perfect place to put this, to get the most new coverage that where we don't have the coverage versus just limiting ourselves to the property that we currently own, but to give us a target for, hey, if something were to come available here with the thought that by 2045, we would be putting a station in a place that would be most effective in its amount of coverage, that we would look at the opportunity to acquire a property that might come available so that we're being the most effective that we can, not necessarily the most efficient that we would be because we already currently own the property.
Thank you. That's an excellent observation, and if it is the will of council and the city manager, I will ensure that this is reviewed as part of Phase Three when we synthesize the data that works for council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I agree with Councilmember Steinkie, some of his comments that he made. You know, when you look at the one map there, you have the Everest Station, and then I think the one up further north is the new Station 13, and you have that gray area in between. You would think that that next station would be on Del Prado, somewhere up near where the gray station, where the gray shaded areas versus down close proximity to the other one. But that's something that, you know, our police chief will, I'm sorry, our fire chief will make a recommendation. One thing that did stand out for me, I wanted to ask about, in your presentation on fire stations, where you had the years, you had one up in the northern, north of Pine Island Road, it says 2025. Can you tell us where that station is located?
I don't recall the exact address, I'm sorry. It's on a parcel of adequate size, meaning it's at least two acres that you own, and it's near Festival Park, I think. I say that because the one 2075 just north of there, that's the, see that 2075 one? And I'm not trying to change the subject, but see, when Hudson Creek is actually in development, my strong hunch is it's going to have a fire station inside of it. They're not required to at this point, so I didn't show that. But that one for 2075, probably more ideally located, actually inside Hudson Creek when it develops. But yeah, again, I'm sorry, I don't recall the exact-
Well, I mean, I just, I see the station at 2025, which is next year, so that means we should be, we should be building it now, and we're not. So that's what stood out to me, so maybe I can get with the fire chief at some point, and we'll talk about that.
Right, and I understand it's also, you know, everything sort of touches each other, right? We, I'm not going to go into this, but we can talk about UEPs and where the water, and so this is all tying in together, and it's important that we put the pipes in the ground, hopefully just before the people get there and not after, so that they won't end up paying for well-inseptic systems, and then as a bonus, get to pay another $20,000 for water and so they already sort of have, but now it's on the more professional utility side of things.
Thank you.
Go on, all right. All right, so this is really the main event here today. So we had some money in our budget to allow for some scenario planning, and one of the things we did is we looked at the north portion of Pine Island Road. And the initial study also analyzed the need for shopping centers, but we handcuffed ourselves in the process by saying, you know, we can only put these on zoned land, land that will allow that today. And so when you do that, you wind up with a bunch of stores along Burton Star Road. So we had the right number of things, but they weren't necessarily in the ideal location. This time around, we said, well, let's look at future land use, and maybe we can better locate some of these things, and in fact, we were able to better locate some of them. We don't need to go through all the differences. Just note that along Burton Star, if you look at our original study, we probably had four grocery stores over there because that population needs that. The truth is, they really belong more in the interior of that northern section. So with that said, I want to focus, you can ask me about any one of these things, but I want to focus on Diplomat from this point on in the presentation. So the two stations you see there on Diplomat, I know there's three of them sort of encumbered by the purple, the one at the north end, that's Kismet. Again, we're not talking about that. We're just talking about the Diplomat, and if we put, so this is, if we have, we have a lot of commercial, either future land use or zoned land there, and if we allowed or encouraged neighborhood shopping centers like a Publix, if we did that, hmm, what might the needs, what might come from that? And that's the whole purpose of this analysis. And so I'd like to tell you how scientific of a study we did, but we basically sat to it and said, you know what, what's a reasonable time to go to a grocery store? And we came to the realization of five minutes. You know, I'd like to be at a grocery store in five minutes. I'm only going to drive 10 or 20, but I'd rather only drive five, right? So we ran a five-minute analysis, and that's, that sort of set up that purple area, like this is the universe of people that might, not will, might shop at these two Publixes if they were, if there were two shopping centers, if they were developed. And so then we said, well, how many people are there? That'd be interesting. And because there's overlap, so the first couple of lines in that table, you see, one has 24,000, one has 30,000, there's an overlap of 10, the net number at the bottom, that 43,000, focus on that number. So that's unique people. There's 43,463 people today, well, actually, probably last year, based on our data, that live within that purple area. And I'll just reach back into the past, and I'll tell you that on average, Cape Coral and most of Southwest Florida, we work for a lot of governments, a lot of counties and cities, and the magic number, it varies a little bit, but it's around 14,000 to 17,000 people per neighborhood shopping center. So let's just focus on 15. That's a real nice, neat number. So if I have 30,000 people, I can support two neighborhood shopping centers. Well, we got 43,000. Again, I want to point out today, this isn't some, well, in the future, this is today. With all that said, you probably don't need two neighborhood shopping centers right this second today because you do have enough in the city, but these should be the next two, at least one of these should be developed sooner than later, and we'll get into the why here. So here I'm showing you about the commercial zoned and future land use parcels, and now you can start seeing how the shopping centers are falling on those. And again, we're keeping trip links in mind and all of that. So what I'm not, I don't have a map of this, but we, when we analyzed you, we found that you had about 12 existing grocery stores, what we, what our company defines as a neighborhood shopping center. That means it's a grocery store and has about another 50,000 to 60,000 square feet of ancillary space, your laundromat, your nail salon, restaurant, your insurance broker, and those sorts of things. And so we looked at that existing work we'd already done, and we said, you know, when we have a neighborhood shopping center, how much other stuff is near that? And to jump right to the point, within an eighth of a mile, so that's, it's about 700 feet, you have an average of about 95,000 square feet in addition to your neighborhood shopping center. And if I go crazy, 1,000 feet out, you know, a quarter mile or 1,300 feet out, there's a total of about 184,000. So that means that if I want to do what's normal for Cape Coral, whenever I see a neighborhood shopping center, eventually I'm likely to see another couple hundred thousand of complementary space around that, right? If you think about the grocery stores around the Cape right now, and you think carefully, you'll see, oh, on the other corner, that's right, there's some more development there, there's more development there. It's not necessarily related, but it's complementary, and it serves a purpose. So this is important. So when we were planning and analyzing this corridor, we have now set up, and we've, at each intersection, these nodes, we've now set up little offsets, and you can, those are defined by those dashed lines, so we can sort of see where things are located. And we see that, you know, there's theory, this is that, you know, within a quarter mile, in fact, this is more like a half a mile, even a mile between these nodes- in fact, this is more like a half a mile, even a mile between these nodes, but we can accommodate the square footage that we found that you have normal in other locations. With that said, I want to just take a quick timeout. We're not advocating for any strip, all right? Strip centers are abane to traffic, control and congestion. What we want to do is have focused commercial centers, nodes, where people can get their needs met, and they get back out on the road and not slow down traffic. So as I pointed out, on Diplomat, we can support two neighborhood shopping centers today, and then we have nodes along Diplomat, and I pointed out already that up on Kismet, this needs sort of a similar type of analysis, but it's a little less developed, built-out-wise, and so that's why we're focusing on Diplomat right now. Creating these nodes and defining them will also increase the transportation flexibility in the future. So the original blob I showed you, that purple thing, that was five minutes, okay? Now we've said, okay, forget five minutes. Now let's just say, look, if I live within a mile of Diplomat, I'm probably likely to shop at this store. How many people do we have today? Well, it turns out, it's just under that 30,000, so it keeps hammering on that point that these shopping centers could be supported immediately. And just to alleviate any fears that maybe we're overdeveloping things, well, I already told you that on a statistical, on a per capita basis, the Cape is sort of behind in terms of its commercial development. Well, today, those people have a demand for a million and a half square feet, and if I jump out to 2045, it's a million seven. If I go to build out, it's three and a half million. Now, if you're panicking over where am I going to put three and a half million square feet on Diplomat, relax. That's your all-in demand. That's your diamond cutter, your brain surgeon, it's everything you might need, right? So most of it doesn't need to be related close to my house. What we look for is about 10 square feet, maybe 15 square feet, on a per capita basis locally to meet your local needs. We all have more needs than that, but that's what we use. So the point is, again, there's a lot of demand, unmet demand already on Diplomat, and if we met that demand, we would then reduce how far people drive and how long they spend in a car and congestion. This is just a map to show you how these two existing centers could sit, and then the adjacent nodes that could, where the commercial could be located. Again, this is based on zoning into our future land use. Okay, and I don't want to bore you with numbers. This is complex, I'll try to make it as simple as I can. What we've done here is we still, we've gone back to the five-minute drive time analysis to get the universe of people that might shop at these stores, and we said, well, okay, in this universe of people that might shop at these stores, where are they shopping today? And relax, we didn't spend $100,000 knocking on doors asking where you shop. But we did some, you know, if you live along Burnt Store Road, you're probably not going to go over to Diplomat to buy your groceries, right? And conversely, if you live on Burnt Store Road, you're not going to go over to Diplomat as well. And so we found what we called the short leg and the long leg to find out with some sort of average, and I'm happy to come back to the slide as much as you want, but I'd like to get to, well, actually, okay. So this is the existing miles traveled, and if you look on that table in the map, there's some very tiny numbers, and relax, I have a table with these much bigger for those over 50 like myself. This is the future vehicle miles, and now I said, okay, in this universe of people that can drive, if they, if these stores did exist, then what the trip lengths might look like. So we can, again, measure a difference, if we build them or if we don't build them, that's the whole goal. Will we save traffic or not? A lot of tables. So the things to pick out the most from this is like the fourth line down, 2023 housing units baseline. So for Neighborhood Center One, which is the one on the left, you have 5,000 housing units today, and the one on the right, you have 8,000 housing units today within that five-minute drive time. By build out, you can see those numbers increased quite a bit. If I add those two numbers together, though, I get about 13,000 housing units. And some research that we did on the internet is that we found that on average, and this is a low conservative number, people go to the grocery store about twice a week. Ask my wife, she says four, but on average, we see, we also don't want to overstate things, right? Because these numbers are linear. If I ratchet them up, then the numbers get explosive. And I'm going to show you some explosive numbers, and I want you to know they're based on very conservative approach to this. So at two trips a week, we then have the average existing, the third line down, you see 1.57 is the average trip length for the future, whereas the existing, if you go down like six or seven lines below that gray barrier, you see 3.54, and conversely for the other one. Let's now jump to the bottom line of both of these tables. So if Neighborhood Center One was built, it would save 1.1 million miles a year in trips that people would not have to take. If Neighborhood Center to the right, number two, it's about 700,000. So if these two came online, say by 2030, you're looking at saving, well, in today's development, if no new development occurred, you'd be saving 1.8 million miles of driving. People don't have to buy gas for their car, they don't have to get tires for their car, wear and tear on your streets, those are just things not occurring, the benefit of having, encouraging this type of, this type of development, the right thing in the right place at the right time. If you go to build out, it's 4.1 million miles. Again, that's a year, every year, forever and ever and ever. But it gets better because if these, this development was to take place, so these is the neighborhood shopping centers plus that ancillary complementary commercial around it, it's about 220,000, we estimate, in additional property tax revenues that you're not seeing today. Well, that's kind of cool, because, you know, when we do fiscal analysis, it's rarely do we give just income, just revenues, without expenses. In this case, we can't think of very many expenses that you would have by having a Publix. Maybe law enforcement does a couple more shoplifting arrests, maybe, maybe a couple more accidents because of people pulling out of the grocery store, but in essence, this is free money. So if you allow or encourage this to happen, not only do we reduce between two and four million miles every year of driving that people don't need to do, we're also, the city's going to see a net increase of at least 440,000. And I have not even accounted for, you'd know, if these stores were in there, if you looked on Realtor.com, you know they would say, and we're only three doors down from Publix as one of the selling features. It's going to raise the values of the homes around that as well, right? It's going to, it's going to make life more attractive for those areas, so sort of a win-win. Just to follow up or to sum up then, so Diplomat can support the centers today. They're not going to be developed today, don't worry, but we want to encourage this, the right thing to happen. If you want to give our data to Publix or anyone else, please do, because we'd like to see this happen. The projected vehicle miles traveled is going to be reduced between 1.8 and about 4.1 million miles a year. And what's just astounding, too, is that, remember I added up the number of housing, it was about 13,000? Well, at two trips a week, that's 26,000 trips that people will not be taking out of this area. They're going to stay localized, they're going to stay on Diplomat. It's going to relieve pressure from Pine Island Road, Burnt Store, and Diplomat. As a bonus, then, you also get a little treat of another almost half a million a year in additional tax revenues. So I think this is a really good thing to promote and wanted to present that to you today. With that said, I think it's my last slide. Oh, nope, sorry. So I've been focusing on Diplomat. What I want to make sure I point out is, again, going back to the original statement, you'll never have more vacant land than you have today, and there's needs to the south as well, and so these, there's other traffic improvements that need to be taking place in the South Cape, and we just don't want to forget about those. As important as Diplomat is, there's a lot of other needs in the city as well, and we want to make sure that we're being eyes wide open.
Pardon me. I just wanted to add some additional perspective from the staff's side because this looks like a pretty grand perspective on making changes in the city, but this is the beauty of actually doing appropriate transportation planning and being able to marry land uses and transportation impacts. So by doing so, we are no longer acting reactively to congestion and mitigating those and behind the ball, but now we can proactively start to address what the future of our city should look like from a land use and entitlement perspective, how we can create attractive corridors that have interconnectivity between nodes and allow for multimodal node connectivity. So not only are we reducing vehicle miles traveled, but we're also enhancing our ability to offset congestion through modal split and distribution. David did an excellent presentation by providing those hard numbers on not only the financial benefits, but also the vehicle miles traveled. I want to take an additional step back and say that this planning effort not only coincides from a sustainable transportation perspective, but also coincides with our comprehensive plan. It has been reviewed by planning staff for consensus, and it is in alignment with our future land use transportation element. So if you have any questions on that, I'd be glad to answer them. Pardon for interrupting.
Thank you, Councilmember Steinkie.
Thank you. A question I would have is from our Economic Development Department, do we have people interested in Diplomat right now? I mean, this is all, this is all grand, but we're not going to own the Publix. So do we have a developer that wants to get a Publix in there now, and, or is, are we kind of pie in the sky thinking here?
That's an excellent question. So while I have not worked directly to try and identify a developer, as part of the transportation planning process, our, the city has a mobility team made up of city leadership and directors, including economic development, so they are aware of this plan. Should we move forward with this in this perspective, then I believe that's an additional conversation I could have with economic development.
Sharon's wanting to talk.
Additionally, I happen to be friends with Phil Fischler, who's formerly worked for Publix. I have, so I treat you, you're my client, and well, everything I do is public. We don't just go and start sending information out to everyone, but I would be happy to make this available to him for his inroads and attracting. I think what the story is that people don't realize, because what we just pointed out isn't obvious unless you live in Cape Coral, and the people that develop these kinds of things don't live in Cape Coral, they live somewhere else, and so they pick off the obvious things. Oh, Burnt Store Road, and Pine Island Road, and these sorts of things. Once they become, this is hard data, we're not, this is, there's no forecasting in this. And so I think once they're made aware of what's available, and then we get into land costs. Now, if someone's asking 5 million an acre, okay, you're not going to get a Publix. But as things become more reasonable, this is shooting fish in a barrel. This is exactly what they're looking for.
Right. Well, my concern is, do we need to generate the demand, or have we already experienced the demand that would tighten the timeframe on the value of adopting this, adopting this plan?
Councilmember Sharon Woodbury, Economic and Business Development Manager. David very much hit on what's been my experience to date. Developers are right now keyed in on Pine Island Road because it's, it's easy to see that there is opportunity there, there is land assembled and available for development. There's a story to tell, and I certainly believe that with this data, it will be easier to demonstrate why they should be looking at Diplomat. I would envision the, the challenge would be finding a site, that the property is assembled and available for development to occur. But right now, no, Diplomat is not in their crosshairs. We would have to tell that story and explain why.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to add one more bit of context to that. With the approval of the city's multimodal transportation master plan, one of the precedent priority projects, rather, that I identified was the need to start doing corridor planning studies. Diplomat is identified as the number one corridor planning study, so we can start making those aggregation of parcels, start visualizing that, and making it public knowledge sooner than later. And I can tell you right now that the Diplomat corridor planning study is fully funded right now and ready to move forward.
Thank you.
Also, I think one of the things you got to look at when you're looking at future development, most of the developers are looking for the infrastructure, the utilities to be in place. We can put whatever we want on a map, but unfortunately, if the infrastructure's not there for the developers, typically, they're going to move on to a different location. And an example could be, and I know we've had discussions previously on the Burnt Store corridor to be our next commercial zone, and I promise you, as quick as we can put utilities, water and sewer down that particular corridor, will be, as soon as we do that, that's when you'll see the explosive of commercial growth on that corridor or any corridor throughout the city. A lot of times, that's, that's the deciding factor for most developer is the infrastructure. So I think what we need to do is take the information that you brought for us, and really, not only for our transportation master plan and identify the needs, but also for our infrastructure, for our utilities. You know, so if we want to try to carve out some areas in the city to make sure that we had that commercial development, we have to try to make sure that we get our utilities there first. So I think once we do that, that's when you'll see the developers come, because most of the time, that's the first question. Do you have utilities? If the answer's no, they move on somewhere else. And I know that's been a problem in the past.
May I follow up on that real quick?
Yes, sir.
So to your point, yeah, my phone has rung from landowners and developers that wanted our data for the northern part of Burnt Store for the sole purpose of a Publix. In the end, I don't know back that gentleman, I can't remember what his name was, hasn't called me again, but I think it was one of those red parcels up on the east side, I think he owned one of those. And so they are, people are sniffing the area. I do know that in Charlotte County, we also work for Charlotte County, that there's thoughts of putting a neighborhood center down that way, too. It doesn't diminish any of the need for any of these centers that I'm showing. You made another point that I wanted to touch on. Oh, so talking about, again, the interconnectivity of planning and all the work that our firm has done for you, and we have done a lot for many of your departments, we also did the, we partnered with AECOM, and we did your UEP extension plan and prioritize, and if you lay that on top, you're going to find where these, these stores are, was one of the number one priority areas for utility extensions. So understand, this isn't going to happen overnight, and there's, there are some headwinds, but there's a reason to do the right thing, and let's get some utilities. And not talking out of school here, but water is probably more important than sewer because you need fire flows for a commercial. They could probably find some other things to temporarily handle the wastewater side of things. Of course, it'd be nice to have water and sewer in the entire area, but water is the, probably the number one thing, so make sure we can put out a structure fire. If we can't, I don't know any way we can develop a shopping center, so.
Okay, any other questions? We appreciate your presentation and very informative. Anything I would ask, Mr. City Manager, this is definitely something I think we need to pass on to whomever the next city council members are, because this is good information to at least keep in the back of your mind when you're making decisions moving forward.
Rita, one last thing that Laura said at the beginning. We only work for government, so we appreciate your business. Without you, I don't have a job, and we really appreciate you over the last 20 years, and we put our all into every project we can to give you as much value out of our work as possible, and we just say thank you very much.
Yeah, and again, thank you. Okay, item six, we moved up in the agenda, so we've already taken care of that. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pursuant to our discussion this morning, if the council would agree, there's about six or seven items that were on the consent agenda for next week's meeting that I have staff ready to give a quick one- to three-minute discussion on prior to the vote next week, but that'd be up to you all.
Yeah, and just to give the council a little background, I received the agenda yesterday for the, for the meeting for next week. We had about 30 items on the consent agenda, probably totaling between 40 and 50 million dollars. There was a few items that I had highlighted that I thought maybe we should move to new business. In order to get a short presentation, the city manager recommended that maybe we do that today on some of those items, so I just want to give you a little background why we find ourselves with that ask. So with that. Yeah, I was thinking maybe we take a 30-minute break and then come back, maybe somewhere about 12:20.
And, yeah, absolutely. And just for you all's information, we typically don't put items on the swearing-in agenda, so the reason that it's kind of a double-dub, double-stacked consent is because we advanced all those items for your consideration. So that's why it's bigger than normal. It's kind of like heading into hiatus and coming out of hiatus.
Okay. Everybody okay with 30-minute break and coming back?
Before we take that break, I had one item for roundtable discussion. Would it be possible for me to bring that up before we take a break?
I'm okay with that. Yeah. How long's it going to take to talk about?
Less than, less than three minutes.
Oh, okay. Then we'll use the clock.
Okay.
All I wanted to bring up in roundtable was with, with the closure of J.C. Park and the amount of time that it's going to take for it to and the amount of time that it's going to take, uh, for it to reopen, I think one of the things that's, uh, happening in that transition is something that we could help, um, alleviate, and that is, um, the small pavilions that we have in JCPark right now, when people reserve those for, for birthday parties, some of our, uh, social clubs and whatnot use them to meet. Um, w- we're lacking that, uh, and we, and there is a quick fix that we could, uh, and a temporary fix that we could, um, employ to supply that replacement need, if you will, for that year it's going to take. And that is the use of, uh, like a commercial, uh, tent, if you would, uh, where we could bring in a couple picnic tables and a commercial tent that would, that would, in a sense, replace the ability for people to have their birthday parties and do whatever. In a couple of the parks that are really close to JCPark, Veterans Park is one of them, Founder's Park is another, where, where the, all those activities that have been used to being done in JCPark that will be able to be done to even, you know, a nicer, uh, degree, once it's completed. For that twelve months it's going to take to complete it, I think we should do something to provide something temporarily in, in one of the neighboring parks to allow that same, you know, almost in the same vicinity, the ability to have that birthday party, the ability for, for Alcoholics Anonymous to have their meeting, uh, that they have, where they would have some type of a shelter. Veterans, uh, Park certainly has a huge shelter, but that kind of removes the, the privacy, if you will, of having a birthday party and being set aside by, by yourself in a park. And we have those two facilities already available. Maybe another facility would also be, uh, thought of. But, um, what, what I'd like to see is some type of a solution, uh, that we give to the people that would normally go to JCPark for those types of events, to give them, uh, additional spots somewhere else where they could do that.
Yeah, I guess my question would be, uh, uh, before we come up with a solution to make sure we have a problem. So I don't know if our Parks Director is still here. You know, that would be a question for him. Uh, do we have, are we not, uh, able to accommodate, uh, with our existing parks that we have now and the structures we have now?
We, what we can do is we can look at an analysis, kind of like that neighborhood park analysis, of the number of shelters and the number of, uh, available things within, uh, two to five miles. And I think the goal is to just, if we had five and we wind up with two, find a way to make three available.
Right, and it, and certainly I agree that if, if, if we, if the increased demand that would be placed on those others can be accommodated, well, we've already got there, that's fine. All, all I'd be concerned about, um, is when you look at Veterans Park, that, that truly is not, by having that amount of shelter, that is really not replacing what we're temporarily losing at JCPark until the construction is, is done. And that's ability for that, for those smaller set aside type events that, that people do use it, and some of our, of our, you know, social organizations use, use those pavilions there as well. And, and so...
I'm fairly certain it's, i- i- if we do rent a tent for, just for the duration, uh, they'll be unavailable. It'll be less than a hundred thousand. I can do it with Joe administratively. I don't think it would even take a requirement of council approval. We'll run an analysis and we'll, uh, we'll understand the requests for those residents in the southeast.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with that, uh, let's, uh, take a thirty minute break and come back about, uh, twelve twenty-five.
Yeah.
Turn the floor over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just so, just for background, so again, on the next agenda, we've advanced basically two, two meetings worth of consent items. And so when you see the agenda come out tomorrow, it will, it will be about twice as what you would normally see. It would look more like heading into hiatus or coming out of the hiatus. And there were two, four, six, eight, nine items. One of them, we already did this morning, which was the presentation on the financial policy. So we just have eight items. I want to go through real quickly with staff those items. I'm going to read the resolution and give you the title of that resolution. And then I'm going to have staff discuss, you know, generally what you all will be considering. The first one is Resolution 31424. It is the approval of the fiscal year 2025 capital equipment, vehicles, and peripheral equipment. Mark?
Yep. Mayor and council members, this is a omnibus type resolution that we've been doing for probably the last 11, 12 years. What we do is we aggregate all of the capital equipment, vehicles, and any corresponding peripheral bil- equipment associated with them, all hardware and software associated across all funds, and put them through as an omnibus resolution. And these are all items that you've approved as part of the overall budget. There's nothing that's added or extra in here. And so we've bring these forward to, to the city council in the beginning of the year. It gives us the opportunity to go out there, order the equipment upfront. And there's no, no requirement to go through any bidding processes or otherwise. We usually use standard contracts that are, that are available to us through our procurement ordinance, et cetera. And so in this case, we're looking at a total cost of about 29, 20, almost $30 million worth of equipment, vehicles, and any of the peripheral equipment, et cetera, software across all funds.
And so what, what we've done is about 10 years now, before we brought forward an annual resolution for purchase of equipment and capital, every single purchase individually came forward, whether it was a $100,000, you know, tandem truck, kind of like the stage last week. All of those individual purchases would have their own resolution, what section of the code it was, and then asked for city council approval. So what we did about 10 years ago to assist in helping get the whole process done quicker is we basically said, okay, here's all the items that you budgeted for, or we requested budget appropriations for, you all adopted. We bring them all into one, as Mark said, one omnibus kind of request to spend and say, okay, as long as we follow the procurement rules that are out there, allow us to go forward and execute. So it's really an efficiency measure in reducing the amount of resolutions that need to be drafted and all the processes thereafter. Any questions on that one?
Any questions on that?
Okay, Resolution 33424 was the amendment to the financial policies. We discussed that earlier in the meeting today. Resolution 35024 is the award of a bid to Burke Construction for the neighborhood park improvements at Tropicana Park.
So this, this item, and I, I have staff here that can also work with, talk with you about the timing and et cetera associated with this. This is Tropicana Park. This is the last park that we have to do within the, the geo bond projects. We put out a bid after we were noticed that we received all the permits necessary to be able to do this park. The bids were opened on October 7th. We have done the evaluation of all the, the responsible parties, and we've chosen Burke as the lowest responsive and responsible bid for this project.
I had two quick questions on that. Number one, the docks for public safety vessels, is that in with this? I know we relocated them, had to apply for permits.
The docks are not in here. If you remember, one of the issues we had with even getting to this point was we were, we could not get the permit out of the Corps. So we're going to award this contract, and then we will go back to amend that. We needed to get that Corps permit in hand so we can get the construction started. Now we will take the funding that was set aside for that and seek to amend that Corps permit for those additional docks, and then we'll do an amendment to this contract.
Okay. And then lastly, I guess at some point, I know we've had in-depth discussions on any type of lease agreement that we're going to do there with the rowing club. And I know that has to come back to council. I guess that'll be somewhat at a later time.
That is correct.
That's all the questions I had.
Okay, the next one is 360-24, which is approved land use restriction and affordable housing rental agreements for live local projects. That one is Amy.
Mayor Councilmembers, for the record, Amy Yearsley, Planning Division. As you're aware, in 2023, Live Local was passed. This allows for affordable housing on lands zoned commercial, industrial, or mixed use. It is, they're going to be the responsibility of the local governments to ensure compliance with the state regulations. What you're going to have in front of you next week are going to be two of the documents that we're going to have that will ensure that these units remain affordable for the periods that are required within the law.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Okay, the next one is Resolution 362-24, approved contract for the purchase of 4816 Triton Court located in the city's downtown community CRA Bimini Basin District. This one is one of the remaining eight parcels that were not part of our larger purchase that we did with the owner that had a majority of them. Staff has been continuously working with all of the other individuals. As this one and the next one that the mayor had asked are purchases of those other two, which leaves remaining, I think, six. And we are in contact and negotiations with all of them that are willing to enter into discussions with us to, to get the balance of the properties down there.
And the value of that particular purchase?
This one is 4816 Triton Court is purchase price of $1 million with closing costs not to exceed $15,000.
Okay, thank you. Councilmembers, thank you.
And, and just so you know, this is, it's in, in the cover sheet, 17.75% over the appraised value to, to get that.
That was my question.
Yep. So in, when you look at the backup, it'll be paragraph one, two, three, it's like the third line, the counter offer that we had. We off, we offered 850, basically kind of at the appraised value. The seller counter offered at $1 million, which was 17.75% over the appraisal.
So we did not counter offer? Counter?
We did not. I don't know. I don't have all the back and forths, just what our initial was and where we landed. I can find out.
Thank you.
Okay.
The next one is 4824, and this one is also 4824 Manor Court located in the downtown CRA Bimini District. This one is for the purchase price of $643,800 with closing costs not to exceed $10,000 for a total of $653,800. And this, this site is a three lot site consisting of two buildings with four units. Does not look like there was a counter, a counter to ours and appears to have been accepted at our offer.
Okay, any questions?
Are they two different owners, Mike, or are they the same owner, those two, the ones we just, the first one and the one we just talked about?
Two different ones.
I believe, I believe these are two, are two individual owners. I have a, we have a list. Give me one second.
These were separate owners, Mike.
Two separate owners, yeah.
That's all. I don't, I don't need the rest of the, the other six remaining if you don't have it handy. I'm just curious about these two.
Yes. And there, there are, so down there, we, we have a map, just, just so you all know kind of how we're managing this. We have a, a map of the ones that we didn't have. We, several of them, one, two, three of them are owned by one owner, and the rest are all owned individual. So it looks like five are owned by individ- different individuals, and then the sixth person owns three of them.
Thank you.
And how many total parcels are we trying to purchase?
There are, there are eight more on this whole, there's the corner one, which is the, the auto repair. There are eight more. This closes up of two of those, and we all, we have negotiations ongoing with, with the others.
Okay.
Any more questions on this one, or the, those? Okay, the next one is Resolution 36624, approved reimbursement of costs related to the acquisition of approximately 1,202 acres of land, which will be used for the city's irrigation and water system. This one is Jeff and/or Mark?
It's me.
Okay.
This is a reimbursement resolution. This has, has to do with anytime we issue debt. From a timing standpoint, we want to make sure that any expenditures that occur within a period of time prior to the actual issuance of debt will be recoverable with that debt issuance. In this, in this circumstance, putting out a, this resolution just simply implies that, or indicates that if we do expend any funds during the period of time before we actually issue the debt or even purchase the land, that we'll be able to recover that through this tax exempt purchase. That's it.
And this is the reservoir, correct?
This is the reservoir. This is the 1,202 acres that Mr. Pearson gave you a briefing on last week at the city council meeting.
Any questions on that?
No more questions on that?
Yep, we're good on that.
Next one is approved work authorization GP 01 with Gulf Point Construction Company utilizing a master agreement for the purposes of utility upgrades and road reconstruction in support of the Bimini Square Mixed Use Project for a guaranteed maximum price of $2,108,959, $959.57. Matt and/or Mark?
Yeah. Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the council. As, as Mike explained there, this is authorization of work with, with Gulf Point Construction Company utilizing a master agreement. This is, the scope of this project is to make some public improvements that are on the periphery of Bimini Square out there on Streets, Palm Tree Drive, Tudor Drive, and Sunset Court. So this will be some, some roadway improvements, some utility removal, relocation work, storm tree, storm drainage improvements, as well as an exfiltration trench that will serve not just this development, but future developments in the CRA. We sell those credits for developers that they come in. So that is the scope of the project. As also as part of this request, council approved back in February of this year, maximum of $1 million for the C Mar firms. This is 2.1 million. So it's more than double what council approved in general for C Mar contracts back in February.
And I would assume that the, the scope of work increased, and that's why there's such an increase in dollar amount? Or is it because of the economic times we, we find that the project came in twice as much as we thought?
Well, I think it's, it's as much a timing thing, and I'll let Mark answer. But I know what we want to do is get this work done concurrently with the Bimini Square project. That way, we're lessening the impact on, on the residents out there as far as construction fatigue. So timing had a part of this. I don't know, Mark, if, if you want to expand on it?
This was not a planned project. It was while we were, while the folks that are building Bimini Square was on site, they're going to be tearing up the roads that are on the periphery of this site. And so they contacted us, and, and we had a conversation with them and made some determinations that, yes, there are some, there are things that we can do down there that would benefit us at the same time while the roads are open. So that's, that is primarily why this is, why we're doing what we're doing here.
Any questions on that?
Just a quick one. The funding source, what's the funding source for this one?
Stormwater and water and sewer.
Thank you.
And could you address the question I had with the going from a million to 2.1? Is that because of the scope of work increased?
In this case, when we brought the C Mar to you earlier this year, the plan was is that we would do no projects utilizing the C Mar contracts that would exceed $1 million. In the circumstances associated with this, you know, this was the, this was the quickest way that we could be onsite and doing work in conjunction with Bimini Square at the same time. And so as, as we went and we priced it, it came in at the $2 million. And so we're advising you that in this circumstance, we need to increase this. You originally authorized them at $1 million. We're asking you to authorize this at $2 million.
Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. So is there any urgent money in that? I mean, is it, is it because, because we're considering this a, an urgent request to combine it up with the Bimini Basin project? Are we paying more because of that?
No, I, that is not the case. I think if, if we were to plan this work, it would come out at the same cost if, if we were to go out to bid for, for this project. I don't think the urgency has any bearing on the cost of this project at all.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, it sounds like that we're tearing up the roads, and while we have them exposed, hey, let's do some infrastructure improvements and then put the roads down.
Right. In fact, it may actually cost us more if after they put in brand new roads, we need to go back in there and tear them up to do what we're doing. And so I think we're actually getting a, a bigger bang for our buck being able to do this at the same time.
Any other questions? Thank you.
The last one is Resolution 36824, approved purchase orders related to Hurricane Milton that exceed city manager's dollar threshold on prepositioned contracts or emergency purchases. Estimated amount is 4.1 million. Authorized city manager to approve purchase orders for these purchases and related documents. Mark?
And so we, after every time we declare emergency, we come back at least once, if not multiple times, when we have purchases that are made under the emergency portion of the procurement ordinance. And so in this circumstance, this encompasses all of the expenses that were incurred during the emergency period associated with Hurricane Milton. This would include any of the disaster management services that we would have with Hagerty. We also have debris removal at $2 million with Ceres. We have disaster monitoring for the debris removal with Tetra Tech. We also utilize disaster management services with Tetra Tech on evaluating some of our facilities. We also brought in with, through the utilities, we needed to have some Beck trucks onsite and generators. So these are contracts that we would, we would utilize. This is $663,000 and $500,000 respectively. Also, we have CAP Government as well as Joe Payne, Inc. These were for substantial damage inspection services for, for the residential properties and commercial properties we have in the city. And so the, so in, in, so associated with this, where we would be looking to get approval after the fact for all of these purchases that we needed to have in place and ready to go as a result of the emergency and the ensuing recovery.
Any questions on, on that? Councilmembers, thank you.
Thank you. Are these, would these expenses end up being reimbursable?
Yes. To the extent that, that we can certainly would. From a timing standpoint, if we get most of the debris, if not all of the debris done within a 90-day period, based upon the, the comments made by President Biden, that it would be 100% reimbursable. The, that would go for both debris removal and the, and the monitoring services. As far as the disaster management services by both Tetra Tech and Hagerty, these are, these are open purchase orders on an as-needed basis. So it depends on how much we actually spend and the timing of when we would receive those reimbursements. For CAP Government and Joe Payne, these are for the substantial damage inspection services. We will, we will submit for them. will, we will submit for them. It's probably not at 100%. We will end up picking up a certain portion of that, but the, and that would be the same with, but Badger and LIG Rentals, generally speaking, with, because they occurred during the, during the actual event and the short period after recovery, it's likely we would get 100%.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick, Mr. City Manager, since we're talking about this topic, Ceres, have they mobilized in the city yet?
Yes, yes, they are picking up debris. We are actually using some public works assets, the two grapplers and the mini garbage truck. They are starting in the Friday zone and Ceres is starting in the Monday. They're, we're utilizing the, the regular collection routes. And so we're basically going to work backwards. So we'll do Friday. When we finish Friday, we'll go to Thursday. They're going to go to Tuesday. And then somewhere around middle of next month, we'll probably drop out and they'll just finish, you know, Wednesday. But the goal is to, we're trying to be done before Thanksgiving with all the veg and, and C and D collection.
Okay. And the drop-off sites are still open?
Drop-off sites are open. Yeah, and so we are, you know, we're seeing, you know, i- if somebody's in that Wednesday, Thursday, Tuesday kind of, you know, and it's taking a while, we may even see over the next couple of weeks, we may even see people just pick their stuff up and bring it up there just to, and then that'll start helping speed stuff up as well.
Okay. Councilmember Law?
Well, that was, I guess, the question is speeding stuff up. I mean, it's, it seems like, obviously because of the, the nature, the magnitude of our effects of the hurricane, we're not going to see the same sort of response from a debris hauling perspective. You're not seeing the large trucks coming through. I actually stopped by the, the site this morning and it's a lot of the smaller type trucks, which I hadn't seen last time. I would imagine that just logically, that means that it's going to take a lot longer for this process to, to sort of play out. I mean, when you look around and you see the minimal horticulture out the streets and then you talk about Thanksgiving, I mean, where's the correlation with why it would take so long?
About, we're, we're looking at about six weeks. So if you think about what we had after Ian, we had almost 200 assets on the ground, double barrel haulers, and it took us three months. We were over the 90 days just to even get through, I think, the second pass. So relatively speaking, it's, it's going to take longer for the first pass because we don't have that many assets, but by volume, we'll, we'll be, we'll be ahead of, ahead of where we were. Because the limiting factor then is you have so much veg and so much C and D. You, we had to split those 200 trucks up for veg and C and D. They're not, you're not allowed to co-mingle those. So if you remember, there was a lot of, so we're, we're looking at basically having our one and only pass done within six weeks from start.
Yeah, yeah, volume wasn't the concern. I thought, I, that's what I was trying to make. I think now it's just the inconvenience that the residents are incurring, more particularly in the Northwest where the, where the dump sites are, and that is going to take longer when in reality it shouldn't if you're just comparing volume versus time from Ian to now. But even throughout the city where they've got debris at the roadway for longer than they typically would have had during the last cycle when you compare the volume with, with the speed. So that's the, the nature of, of the inquiry is obviously we have less assets or less incentivized.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's a, it's a factor of how many, how many tons or, you know, cubic yards can they move a day? How many do you have on the streets? And just like we saw after Irma, you know, these assets are going to go where they're really needed, to where we need to move large volumes of material in the same amount of time that you would need to move smaller volumes. So we, while we're lucky and we're glad that we didn't have what our neighbors to the north had, or even out on the barrier islands, it's still enough to be an annoyance, right? It's not enough to be, you know, dreading about and, but it's still enough to be, okay, we, we, we need help. Waste Pro can't do it and we can't do it alone, so.
That was a question. We need help, but we don't need it as much as others do, and I certainly agree with that. And so it's warranted that we're getting sort of the crumbs of the, of the debris haul, so to speak. And it, and it's just like discomfort, I guess, for the, for the residents here. But then the question kind of switches and we can have it at another point, is, is where, I guess, what's the threshold, if we have any at all with regards to Waste Pro, where they just kind of check out and say, hey, we're going to leave this debris stuff up to the, the third-party haulers, let's say, versus, hey, this is kind of stuff that we typically would pick up ordinarily through over the course of a month. We could certainly do it in a, in a two-week cycle. Is there?
Waste Pro is, Waste Pro is running normal horticulture is my understanding, right? They're, they're back on all three services. So what, what Waste Pro is going to look for?
How are they differentiating between what's at the curb?
Well, ju- just like we would, you and I, right? If it's, if it's bagged and ta, you know, ha, if it's tied up trees with twine no more than four feet long, then that obviously was something that I did this weekend to set out for Waste Pro. If it's a neatly stacked pile of three or four palm fronds, they're going to get that. But most of the piles that you drive around are not, you know, tied up and cut four feet or, you know, and no hiding three feet and they're, they're mixed in, you know, piles of oak limbs with palms. And so the, the driver, I mean, is going to have to look at it and say, yeah, this is obviously not a vegetation pile. And I think if you drove around and you, you would see which ones are not, clearly are not normal, weak, weekly, you know, disposals. They, because those have to be set out in a specific fashion. Most of the people who drug out all the stuff-
It's discretionary by Waste Pro, the individual drivers, I guess, as to what they're determining?
It's got to be compliant, not discretionary. If it's a compliant pile, they got to pick it up.
Seems kind of like a mess. Okay. I wasn't aware that, that they were both going on at the same time. Thank you.
Councilmember Cory?
Yeah, I, I had the same question. And I, I just, I just limited it to palm fronds. Palm fronds are removable by Waste Pro. I don't think there's any restriction on any quantity or size. And a lot of, quite honestly, a lot of the piles that I've seen in my area are palm fronds and they're not being picked up by Waste Pro. I mean, all my regi, all my vegetation went, I had a pretty decent pile out in my yard personally. But as I drove in the area, I saw piles that I felt may have been compliant specific to fronds, you know, not co-mingled in any way, that may be able to be removed by Waste Pro. And I think the comment about, you know, who's making that call, I think is important that we are at least validating their decision-making, especially with the staff that we have, you know, in support of that effort. So I, say, I had the same question, but I've, I've seen piles that I think are compliant that probably should be gone, so.
If I may, Mayor, I think if, if this was last week, Waste Pro wasn't doing vegetation last week. If it was this week, then-
My, my, my personal reference was this week.
Okay.
And I, and I referenced it based on what left my house and then my neighborhood specifically. So, and I, I'll give you an example. Pelican south of the parkway would be an area that I would consider maybe just a review.
I, I'll be sure to talk to our solid waste manager about that and, and get some follow-up there.
Thank you. You're welcome.
I, I think it was a volume issue for them. They obviously had, with the, with the hurricane, they weren't able to pick up leading into it. And during the hurricane that week, they were off. So there, it was a volume issue for them and they wanted to get the putrescible waste out as quickly as possible before they focused on the, the large bulk items and, and the vegetation removal there. Yes, sir.
Councilmember Stanky?
Thank you. Suffice it to say, can we, can we just ask Terry to have his crew kind of inspect what we expect and, you know, call them out for, hey, you know, XYZ, you know, Elm Street was not picked up and here's a picture of it. And, and let's hold them accountable for picking up what they should be picking up.
That, that is precisely the conversation I'll have with Terry and, and his inspectors. Make sure that, you know, if, if there's palm fronds laid out there per the standard that Waste Pro has, has set, then they should be getting picked up by Waste Pro. And if they're not, we need to have a conversation with them.
And certainly if, if the, if the crew finds that it's a resident that's not done what they need to do to have it properly set up for pickup, and, and maybe there's a, maybe there's a note that, that would be left that says, hey, if you're expecting this to be picked up by debris removal, by hurricane debris removal, it, it could take a while. If in fact you put it in four-foot lengths bound by twine, then Waste Pro will be expected to pick it up on next pass. So they understand the difference between the two. And if it takes longer to get the debris out and if they were simply to go out there and maybe cut something into a couple of sections and make it pickup-able by Waste Pro, that they could take that action if they knew the difference and why it was still sitting there.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think easiest thing to do is send the inspectors out, you know, tomorrow in, in the Wednesday zone, just ride around. They'll, they'll know the answer pretty quick.
Sure. Yeah, follow the trucks around. They can, yeah.
Well, Councilmember Hayden?
And so since we're reimbursed by FEMA for cubic yards of debris removal, is Waste Pro then keeping track of how much they pick up that can be hur, hurricane-related?
They're already paid by us for picking up on their regular routes.
Right.
In, in this circumstance, I think even if they were, we don't have monitors out there monitoring what they are picking up, number one. And number two, they're not taking it to a site for us that needs to then be monitored and identified as the appropriate waste, or in this particular case debris, that could be disposed of and reimbursed by FEMA.
Okay, yeah, because it could be, example would be my house. I've got my palm fronds and my berry bushes separated, just like I do every week. But what's out there now is all hurricane-related. The piles aren't that much bigger than what they, what they usually are because of things that, so.
If, if you've bundled them in the format that they would normally pick up, then they'll likely pick it up.
Yeah.
And it would be, and, you know, they, then it was just that much less debris that our haulers will end up having to pick up.
Okay. But it's not necessarily, because of reimbursement value, it's not necessarily a hit to the community that they're picking up.
No.
Cubic yards of-
They're already paying for it. It's, it's already, it's embedded in their assessments.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, seeing no other discussion on that. Thank you.
If, if I may, Mayor, there was a question brought up by Councilman Stanky regarding the negotiation of one of the, the lots that we purchased and I got some information on that, if that's okay. We did go back and forth with them. I think we originally offered at 850. They wanted a, a million and a quarter and we got them down to a million. So there, there was some back and forth that did go on between, between our real estate group and them. You're welcome.
Okay, I believe that's all the items?
That is all the items. Just wanted to close up with that comment that, from Councilmember Hayden. So if, if Waste Pro picks up stuff, it's going to be on us to pay the tipping fee at the landfill. If Ceres picks up the veg and takes it to a debris site that's monitored, we'll pay, but we'll get reimbursed at 100% for the first 90 days. So it's, do we want the money back or not? That, you know, I'm not saying that we're trying to manipulate the system, but we're doing the best we can to try and get maximum reimbursement while knowing some of it is.
I guess the caveat to that would be it wouldn't take 90 days for Waste Pro to knock it out.
There is no 90 days. November, before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
We're getting 90 days.
Okay.
We have 90 days to do it and get reimbursed at 100%.
I will check back in November.
I'll send you a daily update.
Take me off that list.
No reason to get testy.
Just want to save them some time.
All right, I believe that's all the items. I will just revisit. I know Councilmember Stanky had brought up something, but I just want to give other council members the opportunity. Any roundtable discussions at all? Okay. All right, seeing none. Time, place, future meeting. We have a special meeting in the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for Wednesday, October 30th, beginning at 2:00 PM in council chambers. We also have a regular meeting in the Cape Coral City Council scheduled for that same day, Wednesday, October 30th, beginning at 4:30 PM here in council chambers. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn, second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.